It's a great day in Kershaw County, All-America County. I want to welcome a Boy Scout from, what, Elias Altieri? Which troop is that? 777. Welcome aboard. I hope we can learn from you as much as you might learn from us. Mary, first of all, before we begin, thank you, Elias. You have handed out at our desks certain items. Can you tell everybody what they are?
Yes, sir. The first item is a graph relating to the shipping container ordinance. It's the zones for the districts.
Okay.
There's a memo from Mr. DeBeau's.
Yeah.
There's also a health services district application of a vacancy. And then there's a letter regarding a current tobacco bill before the date.
Okay, thank you. That's just for your information. We're now called to order. Mr. Tucker is on the way. We have a quorum at present, and I ask Councilman Snodgrass to lead us in the invocation pledge. Would you please stand?
Let's pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the freedom we have to live in this great country, the United States of America. Lord, thank you for freedoms that are given to us by those who have sacrificed it to symbol together, Lord, to enjoy freedom of religion, freedom of speech, among other things, Lord, that you have given to us that come from you. What I pray that we will use these rights wisely. Your word tells us too much is given, much is required. And, Father, many in this room, all of us in this room, much has indeed been given. Pray that you will give this council wisdom, Lord, and may the spirit of our dialogue be one that with the intention of moving this county forward and for love of neighbor and others, we love you, and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Snodgrass. We move now to public comments. Mr. DeBeau's, do we have any people signed up?
Mr. Chairman, ten people signed up, and according to the rules of council, which were adopted and public comment was initiated, public comment is limited to thirty minutes. So if you take thirty and divide by ten, using council's rules, that leaves about three minutes for each person.
Very good. Can you call someone up, please?
First person is Tom Webb.
Mr. Webb, please, sir. And as you come forward, this is a time for us to listen and not to exchange in a Q and A. Keep your comments on the topic and within the time limit, and also be respectful of this forum. Mr. Webb.
I won't speak too long because of so many people. I hope somebody else will maybe use some of the time that I will relinquish. I wanted to speak about how sometimes it works with ordinances. Somebody may pass one, and it's not enforced as with these container ordinances, this container ordinance, not enforced for ten years. I call it a sleeper. Somebody passes it, a council passes it, and it's not enforced, so they don't take any heat for it. And ten years later, council might want to pass a modified ordinance and enforce the thing and not claim that they are responsible either because it was actually passed ten years before. So when you do that, it's a sleeper, and it's a way to, in effect, pull the wool over the eyes of the people of Kershaw County. So maybe that's not your intention, but it's kind of what's happening. And so there's another ordinance I'll refer to. I refer to it as anti-asking ordinance. It's about soliciting contributions from the highway. But the way it's written, somebody later could say that a church out in the Boondocks can't even put up a sign on their own property asking for contributions for a mission, for instance. If it can be seen from the highway, it could be considered soliciting from traffic on the highway. So there again, we have, it could be a sleeper. You've passed something and overlooked the future possible twist of it. And some of these ideas, they don't seem to be local to me. I think they're foreign ideas. You know that in the American Revolution, the king of England was actually a German, George III. And his father, George II, was also a German. And George I, king of England, couldn't even speak English. So there have been these foreign influences in England and in us, and the England certainly influenced us. And now we have international codes that are coming from somewhere else, perhaps Germany, European Union, or the UN. These international codes are going to be things that we have to live by, along with the other codes that you will pass as ordinances put into a government Bible that we have to obey. So that's mainly what I had to say, but then there is a little song that impressed me when I was just a child, and I'll sing a little bit of it for you. My country tis of thee, sweet land of liberty, oh thee I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrim's pride. From every mountainside, let freedom ring.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBeau's?
The next person to sign up is John Rice.
And I ask everyone here to remember that we don't want to have a public outburst. We want to carry on with the business, so please restrain yourself. Mr. Rice, please, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys, once again for hearing me out. I'm here once again to voice my opinion on the container ordinance. As in previous meetings, I have many questions still unanswered and concerns over this issue. It seems to me that the government is supposed to be there for me, and it seems like it's against me now to tell me what I can and can't have on my property. I understand if it was a nuisance or caused a harm to anyone, but a container doesn't cause harm, just as a building does on my property that houses my lawnmower, houses other items outside. I have learned as of the other day that anyone who has one right now, it's illegal to have them on their property right now, except for in a construction zone, or they're doing construction on their house. So if it's illegal now, why isn't it being enforced at this date right now? Is it because you guys are working on the issue? If memory serves me correctly, this was an issue that was supposed to be sent back to planning and zoning for a further evaluation, tweaking, or explanation of the ordinance. If so, how many changes have been made since the day one of you guys introducing this ordinance? And it should start over as the original notion, motion, excuse me, has been changed and changed, and you guys will have no idea what you're voting on now. You think you're voting on this, but you're actually voting on that. It should be stricken from the record and started over. Last meeting, an item was placed on the agenda with no intentions of being spoken in public, except for when Councilman Jimmy Jones brought it up, and he was abruptly shut down and spoken to like an idiot. Seems all he was asking was transparency, and no one could back him other than Councilman Bozard initially. Then it was taken into an executive session with a six to one vote. Gentlemen, although I've only been coming here about six or seven months, I've never seen an item on the agenda with no discussion. Then taken into an executive session. Seeing each meeting, the chairman will move to an executive session for discussion of private matters that we, the public, have no clue of what's going on and for a possible vote. We were unaware of the private matters, but yet we were aware, but very unaware of this matter. If anyone out here calls this transparency to local government, I will gladly pay for eye exams.
Next person to sign up is Patsy Dabney.
Ms. Dabney?
My name is Patsy Dabney, and the first thing I want to do is thank Elias in front of everybody here, because when I walked up, he very quietly opened the door, waiting for me to come in. Gentlemen, thank you. And then the next thing I want to talk about is the container ordinance. I've got property, I own a house in the city, and we are blessed to have land out in the country. Our house in the city has restrictive covenants. When we bought the house, we knew it had restrictive covenants. We listened, we obeyed the restrictive covenants because they were a part of what we bought into. We have our land. We bought our land to be able to do things, you know, have fires out there, fireworks, shoot guns out there if we want to. But it's our land, and if I want to put a container on that land, and I want to paint a picture on the side of it and stick it out by the road and say, hey, we're here, I ought to be able to do that without y'all telling me or anything else telling me I can't do it, as long as it's not vulgar. That's all I'm asking, is that we keep our freedom and be able to do what we want to be able to do on our own land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dabney. Mr. DeBeau's?
Next person is Jim Steele.
Mr. Steele?
I'm here also to talk about the container ordinance. You know, property rights have been a cornerstone of the growth of America and what's made America great ever since its founding. And government, over time, well-meaning as they may have been, have slowly eroded those rights. I mean, now we have zoning ordinances, okay? We have building codes. We have side setbacks. We have rear setbacks. Government, over time, has slowly, and maybe even unintentionally, eroded those rights, okay? And as we heard in the invocation, God gave us our rights. Man introduced government to protect those rights, not to define them and not to grant them, but to protect them. So I hope you'll keep that in mind as you consider this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. DeBeau's?
Next person to sign up is Daniel Cato.
Mr. Cato?
Good afternoon, council and Mr. Chairman. My name again is Donnie Cato. I was here a few weeks ago, concerned about a fire protection over in northeastern part of Kershaw County. And the next meeting I came to, I saw that that fire protection for the county was number two on the list, and I appreciate that from the county. Now, I do realize it could be number forty or fifty by now, as you made mention, I think, Mr. Chairman. That's not the reason I'm here tonight. The reason I'm here tonight is to clarify what a dirt road that is owned by the county, who controls the interest in that? Does the county control that interest? It's plainly on the maps, and then the records office in there, that there's a dirt road that runs from 341 Highway, is called West Road, that runs to Charlie Johnson Road. It's been on the maps since the maps were there, okay? But yet, somebody comes along, they put up a fence along the road that's about seven foot wide, restricting the traffic into that property when there's a lot of property owners along West Road. So what does the county do? Who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for the punishment to the people that do such acts as that? Restrict law enforcement? You restrict the MS services to people who may be hurt or sick? Who's responsible for that? Is it the county council's responsibility to talk to the people that's in charge of that? Who's responsible? In your district. Another one of those roads that's up there is Freeman Road. It also crosses 341 Highway and goes on and comes out onto a paved road, which I don't have the number for that one in front of me tonight. Someone has put up a gate on the end of that road, which restricts people from going through that road. Now, no one lives on that part of Freeman Road that is a dirt road. But yet, somebody comes along, bought the property from out of state of South Carolina, decides to put up a gate, and nobody can travel that road now from end to end because the gate's there. Again, whose responsibility is that? Who's going to take the bull by the horns and levy the fines and the punishment to the people who do such acts? Whose responsibility is it? Is it Sheriff's Department? Commissioner of Roads? Commissioner, County Commissioner's job? Whose job is that? That's my question for you. On the container situation, many in the Timrod community, where I mentioned the last time, that's where I come from, that's where I live at, where I work at, where I've been all my life, have not even heard of a container law, or not a law, but an ordinance that you have, passed in the past, that these other people have talked about. Don't even know anything about it. Some of them have containers, some of them don't have containers. Guess what they say? Same thing these other people said. My land, I'll do what I want to with it. That's what them people that put the gate up said too. My land, I'll do what I want to with it. But the other people can't use them, the roads.
Now, Mr. Cato, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cato. I think we've got that. Mr. DeBeau's?
Next is James King.
This is the first time I've spoke to the county council, so y'all forgive me if I stutter. First off, I would like to thank the elected county council members for their hard work and dedication to Kershaw County. With that said, I would like the county council to table for good the container fence amendment. Why? It may be the beginning or the start of a dictatorship to the citizens of Kershaw County. As you well know, the residents of Camden, since it's a historical town, have all kinds of things we can do and can't do, in fact, what color we can paint our house. I do not want county council to also get involved with this. I think each city should be the one to determine whether they want the containers and not the county council, city council. With that, I think you can.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeBeau's?
The next person that signed up is Al Dabney.
Mr. Dabney?
I'm going to keep this brief. I'm not here to talk about the container ordinance, the priority list, or anything specifically. What concerns me as a citizen, it's a process by which we're doing business. Without full disclosure, as mentioned earlier, gentlemen, you're stewards of our money. You're elected officials. So our contract between the two of us is we're your customer. We're the client, okay? And we expect to have full disclosure. We expect our money to be spent in a judicious manner, and I don't think that that's happening right now, and I just wanted to voice my dissatisfaction. I had, Mr. Templar, do you have a chance to pass these out? If you would read these at your leisure, but it's a process. I'm a 39-year construction professional, okay? I've executed work from 150 million to 200 billion dollars, all right? I work by these processes to make sure that I'm successful, okay? I've been involved in industrial property development in Sanford, North Carolina, Bowling Green, Kentucky, Warwick, Indiana, as well as overseas assignments. We're not going down the right path, gentlemen, so I would encourage you to read this. I'm available for questions. Feel free to call me at any time, and I'm going to be in touch with each one of you as an individual to make sure you understand what I'm trying to say here. But we have to follow the process. We're not even asking the proper questions. To, what, when, why, where, and how. I don't even see that process going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dabney, and Mr. DeBeau's?
Next person to sign up is Jeff Maddox.
Mr. Maddox?
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. I'm going to change subjects just a little bit and talk a little bit about economic development and the misallocation of resources. The fundamental position behind this council's drive to put ever more private dollars into the public purse for economic development is that the taxpayers simply cannot be trusted to spend their money in the correct ways. If the money were not taxed, it would be left in the hands of private citizens to be spent on what the private citizens have concluded it should be spent on. Some might invest the money, and some might spend those funds on groceries, some on education, some on automobiles, and some in a nearly infinite number of possible combinations. Each transaction of voluntary exchange would in turn increase the wealth of each participant in the exchange. On the other hand, if the money were taxed and spent on the correct things as defined by those who are politically well-connected, there would be no net increase in wealth above and beyond what would have occurred in the private market. In fact, the net wealth will go down because the government will have to take its cut for administering the funds while producing nothing. All that has occurred is a transfer of wealth from one place to another. This council, however, seems to believe that in these cases, the mere act of taxing money and taking it by force somehow magically adds more wealth to the economy than if those funds were simply left in the hands of the private sector. The conceit behind thinking that private money can be best spent once turned into government money relies upon one of the fallacies explored by French economist Frédéric Bastiat in "That which is seen and that which is not seen." The resources spent by private citizens are what is unseen. It's spent and invested in a myriad of entrepreneurial and creative ways and in decentralized ways that suit families, local communities, and individuals. Because the council and business cartels, such as the Chamber of Communists, can't see it and apparently can't see how it benefits them, they call for that money to be taxed and for that prerogative in spending and investment to be transferred to a safer location, i.e. the government treasury. The money can then be spent safely on what is seen, government roads, government schools, public works, and outright subsidies for businesses. Because this can be seen, it must be superior in the minds of councilmen and the business community. This is a simplistic and unsophisticated view of the economy. What this vulgar reallocation of wealth away from the taxpayers does is nothing other than crush innovation, entrepreneurship, and investment that would have taken place in the absence of council's intervention. The assumption, again, is that the private sector will employ resources poorly while the government will employ them well. On what standard is this assumption based? Certainly not on economic science. As the Australian economists have proven time and again, economies are made efficient by individuals responding to price signals and by voluntary market decisions of millions of actors in those markets. Yet the council wishes to remove those price signals and to transfer the decision-making to them and their so-called experts. The end result is inefficiency and misallocation. It is also the opposite of free enterprise, the unconvincing claims of this council to the contrary notwithstanding. Who can say what innovations, what economic growth, and what capital will be sacrificed in the name of the chamber's agendas?
Mr. Maddox, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
This county council certainly can't say because they can't see what is not seen. Kershaw County has a long track record of failure and misallocation of resources into this unicorn called economic development, and yet with every failure, this council taxes and spends more expecting a different outcome. Gentlemen, this is the very definition of insanity.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Mr. DeBeau's?
The next person to sign up is Tashawn Grant.
Mr. Grant?
I was not prepared to speak today, but when I got here, there was a large crowd, and I felt that the county council needed to understand what had been going on. Because, as you can see with the big sign in front of us, we're an all-American city, and I think that sets a standard for ourselves of how our community and our citizens work together with the government to accomplish things. And interestingly enough, someone stated that what a dictatorship is, and when the government no longer seeks to answer and respond to citizens, that's what you have, that's what it leads to. And recently, with a student beside me, we went all the way to the State Board of Education meeting, and I shouldn't have to tell you guys this, but all the way to the State Board of Education meeting because we did not get a response from the local school board meeting. It wasn't until the day after we went to the State Board meeting, and it was in November that I went, and it was in February that I received a response, four days before I went. And for me to take 15 students, one adult, all the way to the State Board meeting, that says something to our leadership. And for us not to get a response, that sends the message that they're not interested in cooperating with students. And if you want interactive students, like they keep saying, they want interactive students, that's what our county is about, students and teachers collaborating, that's why we have these programs, the first way is for when students come to our leadership about things, to get the cooperation, to at least get a response.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Mr. DeBeau's?
Mr. Chairman, the last person and tenth person to sign up is Edward Tuggle.
Mr. Tuggle? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Ned Tuggle. I'm not used to speaking here. I came a few weeks ago at the invitation of a friend of mine, Tom Webb, whom I respect and esteem. He asked me to speak on the ordinance, but I did not feel prepared to speak on it because I was uninformed. I came again at Tom's behest last night to speak, and I did sign up then, but I asked, this was for the zoning commission, is what it's called. Is that right? Can someone, is that what it was? Planning and zoning, thank you. And so I wanted to speak, but I, again, had not, I was not adequately prepared, and so I asked Ms. Seigler if I could have a copy of the document of the ordinance. And she directed me to Mr. Conwy, who was seated over here, and he told me that he could send it to me by email, which he did last night. And I read the ordinance, and so I'm here to speak not to the substance tonight of whether the container ordinance is a good one or a bad one. That is not, I think, at issue, at least for me. When I read this material, I went through it, and it was a PDF that came to me, and so I read it through in sequence, pages. And the first pages were an ordinance with, at the very top, it had a blank ordinance number, and then it contained one section.
Mr. Tuggle, please talk into the microphone so we, everybody can hear.
I'm speaking up. Can you hear me? If I speak like, can you hear me still?
The problem is the people in the Facebook who are watching live streaming.
Oh, all right. I didn't understand.
If you don't mind, kindly go ahead.
I didn't realize. All right. Well, as the first page appeared, it showed ordinance, and because of the complexity of this, if I run over, I'd ask you to indulge me a little bit because some people went shy. But, and I try to keep it short. First page had ordinance number and then a blank line for people to fill, you know, because it was at that point purely proposed, and I think that was the first reading. And it's dated here on this document as having been January 22, 2019. I scanned on through, and I found the second reading, which was dated, and I'm looking at it. It's now got a number on it, 328 dot 2019, at the top of the page. The second reading is dated February 12, 2019. This consists of one section, and that is all. That is all. The next thing that came through was there were public hearings on February 26. The next thing that came through was there were public hearing on February twenty-sixth. Presumably that would have been the text as it existed at that time, at the, at the second reading. So February twenty-sixth was the public hearing, but it's just one document, one section. Here comes March the sixth. This is in the documents that were provided to me last evening by email. And here is a memo from Councilmember David Snodgrass to members of Kershaw County Council asking that the third reading include an amendment which includes an amendment to Section One, an addition of Section Two, an addition of Section Three, an addition of Section Four, and an addition of Section Five, and an addition of Section Six. That has never been before exposed to the light of day, until now. Gentlemen of the council, I submit that this is shameful to bring something up in a surreptitious, sneaky way.
Uh, Mr. Tuggle, keep your remarks respectful, please.
Respectful, I shall do. And that it is shameful to bring this up when it has never before been exposed to public comment, as if it had been, and indeed, let me cite the memo, the revised portion which includes first reading, January twenty-second. This is the revised version. Second reading, February twelfth, public hearing, February twenty-sixth. That's not true. It ain't so.
Mr. Tuggle, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes. My suggestion to members of the council is to urge you to vote no on this and to send it back to be reviewed in a proper fashion so that the public can know what you're about to vote on and comment appropriately on that, on the full resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Tuggle. Thank you, Mr. DeBeauz. Any further?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the sign-up list.
Very good, and that concludes the public comments. We move now to an adoption of the agenda. I believe you have a comment up, up front, Mr. Carpenter, and then we'll take a motion.
As Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're asking that item number five under new business, bid for Heritage Point Sewer Line, uh, be removed from the council agenda for this week with the intention of placing it on the next agenda.
Well, let's take a motion to, uh, adopt the agenda and then to amend it. Can we have first a motion to adopt the agenda?
So may I.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bozard. Uh, now, can we take a motion to remove item number five under new business, bid for Heritage Point Sewer Line, and then we can open up discussion on the purpose, on why that's being done? Can we have our motion so to do?
So may.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Conell, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard. Uh, please, uh, enlarge on that, Mr. Carpenter.
As Mr. Chairman, members of council, just, uh, staff has, um, had reason to question some of the, um, prices that are used in coming up with the low bid. Uh, we're reviewing them. At this point, we're not comfortable going forward until we've been able to further review and then, um, come up with the comfort level that all the prices quoted are, are good prices that will be held true to.
Well, open it for discussion. Will there be another bid, a process?
At this point, we don't expect there to be one. If there would, then we would go back out for bid and resubmit it again.
Secondly, is it likely that it would be on the agenda at our next meeting, twenty-sixth?
It's the intention, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bozard.
Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
When did we find this out?
Uh, we found it out, um, we've been working on it Monday is when we got information.
When did we get these bids?
Uh, the bids were received, um, about a week and a half ago, maybe?
We've had the bids for a week and a half, and we started a couple of days ago looking at them?
No, we didn't start looking at them. We had, uh, received them, uh, the company was qualified as a certified low bidder. Uh, then the engineers and staff started going over their numbers, uh, because of some questions, so the numbers, uh, we finally came to some conclusions that we need to do some further research, um, with information received, we did not receive till Monday, uh, that allowed us to, uh, determine that some of the, uh, prices quoted on some of the materials, uh, we weren't comfortable with.
Did all these bills are qualified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, other discussion?
What's your exigent circumstance?
Well, uh, there's not an exigent circumstance, Mr. Jones, it's just, um, at this point, staff's requesting that it be removed from the agenda, uh, because the information tells us that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear his question. Your question, Mr. Jones?
So it's not an exigent circumstance, it says we have it on the agenda for approval, and staff now feels not comfortable.
I was, I was just asking that because I was asked that question at the last county council meeting, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Other discussion?
So, Mr. Carpenter, would you say that we, you're operating out of an abundance of caution because of spitting red flags with this company?
Yes, sir. Doesn't, uh, I'm not implying that this is not the company that we'll go with, uh, we just had some questions raised that we need to get firm answers for.
Cool, thank you for your.
Other discussion? Uh, we've moved to a vote, all those in favor of the amendment to the agenda to remove item number five so signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and now there's been amended, all those in favor of the amended agen- uh, agenda, uh, I think we can now move into that part. Uh, any discussion on the amended?
Mr. Chairman, just one comment. We don't need to re-amend the agenda, but Lena Schumake wasn't able to make it tonight, she has a obligation with a child, and, uh, we'll hear from Judge Gene Hardest on the Clean Community Commission update.
Okay, yeah, we don't need to amend that. Uh, other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amended agenda as amended, signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary, the item is deleted, and the agenda is amended. We move to public presentations. The first item is num- item number one, South Carolina Association of Counties, award, Mr. Van Henson. Sir.
Members of council, residents of Kershaw County, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening to speak with you for a momentary. My name's Van Henson, I'm a risk manager with the South Carolina Association of Counties, where, you know, we represent counties on an abundance of items as far as in your interest and all the members. However, specifically, I'm with the insurance trust programs where we administer the South Carolina account, um, Association Counties workers' compensation as well as property and liability trust funds, of which Kershaw County is a member of. Uh, the reason for my bis- um, visit this evening, though, is to bring light to a recent accolade for, for Kershaw County. Uh, we had recently concluded our annual trust membership meeting for the trust programs where Kershaw County was recognized with the two thousand eighteen Outstanding Safety Achievement Award. Now, this award recognizes Barry Cato, Kershaw County Risk Manager, as well as the Kershaw County Safety Committee's hard work on the publication of a safety newsletter called The Joe. Now, this newsletter is actually distributed to department and employees throughout the county. The newsletter contains various articles on safety issues, risk management activities throughout the county, as well as safety puzzles, trending safety topics, and very rightly, most importantly, too, it also recognizes county employees as safety all-stars. The importance of this in our mind and eyes as well is the fact that these county all-stars are actually recommended and voted on by their peers and other county employees. So these are employees who were recognized and called, doing good things out there that their fellow em- uh, employees and members of the county are giving them attributes for, and that's very, very vital in today's culture. Uh, this newsletter is a great tool as far as for communication, communication being something that we lack a lot of these days. Uh, this one actually, you know, it's easy to communicate when we see something bad going on. It, we find it much more difficult to take time out of our busy days and lives as far as to, you know, thank someone for the good jobs that they do and the hard work that they're doing, and this is a, a, a good opportunity as far as that this newsletter does this for your employees. Now, your commitment to risk management obviously is a great use of resources and demonstrates exceptional stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars of Kershaw County as well. Uh, Risk Management Department led by Barry Cato as well as County Administrator, Mr. Vic Carpenter, and all the county departments here need to be commended as far as for their efforts in protecting the county's assets, most important assets, namely, the employees of Kershaw County, without which y'all get nothing done. Barry, on behalf of the South Carolina Association County, I'd like to present you and Kershaw County with the two thousand eighteen Outstanding Safety Achievement Award. If you would step forward at this moment? If the Safety Committee members are present, would y'all please come forward as well?
You had to stand here? Yep.
Good. With that, council membermans, uh, members, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, uh, this evening. Continue doing the good work that you guys have been striving for and doing in Kershaw County, and have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Safe journey back. Appreciate it. Well done.[1277.83][1277.83](applause) A second of public presentations is a Clean Community Commission update, uh, modified from Ms. Lana Schumake to Judge Hardest, Gene Hardest. Uh, Judge, are you here? Good. And if we can keep it limited about fifteen minutes, and of course, in this part of the program, public exchange back and forth is permitted. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, and the council, it's good to be before you tonight. I'm the third stringer tonight. Miss Schumake had a problem, she couldn't be here, and Mrs. Wanda Swan said she could take it, well, she had a death in the family, and she couldn't be here. So I was the only retired guy on the committee, I believe, so I ended up here with y'all one night. Uh, and it's, uh, it's always nice to follow something good. That was a good thing we just had on safety, so it was nice to follow something like that. And that the update I want to bring tonight, uh, to you, the first part, is our March twenty-third litter pickup date. We got, uh, all our members on the committee, signed certain sections of highways across the county, mostly the, uh, roads coming into Camden, and I'm gonna just go over these roads with you, just to let you know which roads we'd be picking up. First road is Highway ninety-seven from Beaver's Creek to Granny Quarry, uh, to, uh, my Wanda Swan and her crew, she's picking that up. Springdale Lane, uh, out by the racetrack, that will be myself and my group, and I'm still trying to get volunteers. I got a few volunteers, but I'm looking at county council, and I'm looking for volunteers. And it's just a good time for y'all to get out and do public work. Look good out there, but, uh, we always looking for, uh, somebody to volunteer. Uh, next one is the U.S., uh, Highway One Hot Spot Airport towards Cassidy. Dennis Outlaw and his group will be picking up out there. Hasty Road and Dicey Creek Road, Robert and Kathy Elbs and Roger Smoke will be doing that. L Street will be Water Reed Church, I don't know what church, uh, they just said Water Reed Church. And this. Highway One, a recent county line, Ross Road, Lana Schumake will be doing that. Elgin Town Limits, Main Street, Railroad Avenue, Campbell Street, Highway Church Road, White Pa- White Pond Road, Becky Robinson. Highway One, Water Reed Bridge towards Lugolf, Doug Fielding. Highway One, Huddle House to Water Reed Bridge, Camden Rotary Club. And Highway six oh one, Overpass, Red Store, which Lugolf, Elgin High School, and Elgin Rittersard Association will be doing that, uh, in this. Several weeks ago, we received a five thousand dollar grant, and we have received that, and we have about spent that, uh, on this. Uh, we have ordered some signs, we ordered six signs, uh, three-by-five signs to put up at our landings at the lake, and, and you see the picture behind you there, just attention boaters, please help keep our highways clean, because you don't realize what blows out of a, a boat without a cover. I mean, it's, quite a few things will come out of a boat, uh, in this. So we'll be putting up signs at all the landings on this side, and I think one on the, uh, Lugolf side over there, uh, signs, uh, in this. We got three big billboards we have ordered go on the highway, these have the, the lights at night that you will see, these are the Hughes billboards, we got three of those coming toward, coming in, and they can be put up at Highway five twenty-one and Black River Road. That's where one of them will be put up, and if you go down Black River Road, you'll notice, you'll be noticing, when we get the sign up, you'll get to sit there and watch it for a while, because they're putting up stoplights there now. So you'll be seeing that for a little longer. Next one will be on Chestnut Ferry Road and the Cab Street. Last one will be Highway One and Lugolf. Now, Lugolf, I don't know where it's gonna be put up at, because they about three or four big signs over there, we're trying to figure out which one that they let us have over there, so getting signs out. But, uh, three signs and the six signs at the lake, uh, where we spent our money at right now, are in this. The, uh, our committee is a very good committee, it's a working committee, and if you don't want to go to work, don't come to this committee, because, uh, they four men and three women, and it's wide open all the time. And I think we got a very good committee, I'm gonna read the names of the committee. Lana Schumake, she's the chairman, Gene Hardest, I'm the vice chair, Wanda Swan, she has done tremendous work so far for us, she's the one who wrote the grant in, in for us, uh, in this. Bill Nettles, Dennis Outlaw, Becky Robinson, Tom Webb, and Doug Fielding. That's our committee, and that is a working committee. They don't tell us what to do, usually when we come to meet, each member's got something that he has won out or she's won out and got to bring to the commi- committee, uh, in this. Now, the, March the twenty-third, day we pick up trash out there, I'll be beating mine at the, in the belt parking lot, it's not a Goodwill store, uh, to pick up trash, and we be picking up trash from there back to the racetrack. Now, you just don't walk out and start picking up trash. There are guidelines you gotta go by. South Carolina Department of Transportation has quite a few of them. Two pages of them. You go through. Actually, that's for safety, bags, vests, but they got twenty-three safety violation things they want you to go, we have to go with our people before we start picking up trash. I know a lot of folks think you just go out and pick up trash. No, it's so, it's dangerous out by the road, so they want you to be very safe out there. So that's where we at right now. Now, we also are in the running, I think, for, uh, trying to, running for a part-time litter control officer. Like someone said, we are very blessed in Kershaw County by God, for some reason, we're very blessed with trash. And it's going, it's just tons and tons of trash out there that be, that's to be picked up, but, uh, we have been very blessed with it, uh, in this. That's why we're looking for volunteers to help us pick up trash. Where we get the first initial trash picked up, I think, uh, law enforcement on board with us, the judges in court on, on board with us, we can pick up trash. I don't mind having anybody pick up trash, if you need to call me, but I will not, if you happen to, I talked to this group and this group, too, if you happen to be in court and get a litter violation, and they, you're signing, go pick up two miles of trash, don't call Gene Hardest, because I don't want to pick that up with you, that's yours, that's your problem. But, uh, I'm looking for that to be on the agenda, uh, probably in a few months, is where we sign folks to go pick up litter that has litter violations, uh, in this. I'm hoping that's gonna be a deterrent to, uh, some of our problem, uh, in our litter pickup, uh, in this. But we're hoping that the part-time litter officer will be a big, a tremendous help to us, uh, in this. We are looking for a grant, uh, that's about all I can say about that right now, we don't, they have not finished the specs for it, so we have not received it, and they said soon as they finish it, they'll send us a copy where we can go ahead and fill the grant out, and hopefully, we will get the grant for the part-time officer. Any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer for you. I got Dennis Outlaw back there, Tom Webb back there.
Would your, uh, members of your board stand up, and then let's open it for question? Uh, who's here from the board?
Dennis.
Yep, Dennis, and there's Tom. Yep, and then, of course, we have the mayor of Elgin who provided one of your members.
She's one, and... She's one, and we're very fortunate, the people we got.
Yeah.
Don't mind working. I mean, they, they want Kershaw County cleaned up, so.
Yeah, for the record, I'll be out there on the Waterbury Bridge, so I'm already out there. We had some questions, Judge, if you don't mind. Mr. Jones, your hands went up first, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for the time. Judge Hardest, we go way, way back, and I just want to say thank you.
You had hair when I met you.
I had a lot of hair. I sure did. I sure did. Head full, actually.
Don't say how you been.
You know, this is something, the Clean Community Commission that I was involved in about 30 years ago, when they first got enacted with Kershaw County, when you were a judge, our chief magistrate, and I can't tell you how it just makes me feel to see you standing up there and the passion you have for it, and the committee. I commend you guys. You're doing a great job. You know, you're right around our county, you see trash thrown out. I know I've called Mr. Temple many times, and the jail administrator, many times about getting inmates out there, even state inmates to clean up, pick up. We can't keep up with it. Law enforcement, the sheriff, they can't keep up with it. And so your efforts are greatly appreciated. Your members are greatly appreciated. I tip my hat to you guys and say thank you so much. And I do pick up trash on Lashcott Road.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bozard.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, I'd like to say thank y'all for all you're doing. And Mr. Carpenter, are we going to be able to put anything in the budget for him this time?
Mr. Bozard, we've had something in the budget for them every year, and I would anticipate we continue to keep something in the budget for them.
Why are you spending most of your money on signs?
Right now, the $5,000 grant we got went mostly to signs, the six signs and the large three signs. Those three signs, they cost to rent those billboards.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to get the community informed about where we at.
Thank you.
Other comments? I want to thank Mr. Bozard for sponsoring the ordinance that led us to this point, and the support he got from Mr. Jones and the entire council. Judge, anything further?
Well, we thank you for what you've done for us, and we're hoping to get into the schools later on to our kids, because the main thing is education. Education, educate, educate. And it's got to start down at the little ones and grow to their parents. So we'll be in schools, trying to get some of the deputies and some of the law enforcement to go in school and read. Got a book about litter, and trying to get them into school to read about litter to these students. It's a good thing for the deputies, the kids get to learn, the deputies see them in some size of patrol car riding around. Any other questions?
I think that's it, and thank you very much indeed.
Let me thank Danny and Mary, because they put this together for me. Thank you both. Thank you, Danny, for what you did.
We now move to the third public presentation, item number three, Historic Camden update with Ms. Haley Brazier. Oh, Haley. And again, 15 minutes or so, and if questions and answer can be expected throughout. Go ahead, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman, council members, and citizens of Kershaw County. Thank you for granting me a few minutes of your time to be able to brag about some of the great work that we've been doing at Historic Camden. Whenever I first started as the executive director there, almost three years ago now, my two main goals were to become a vibrant community space for community pride and our history, and also for community activity, things for people to do from all around the county. And we've been solving some of those issues with some of the many programs that we've done. I would also love for Historic Camden to continue to be the premier tourism destination for Kershaw County. And whenever tourists come into our site, that money stays in Kershaw County. We want them spending money at our restaurants, at our shops, at our hotels, and other destinations too. So these are important things for the county itself. One main strategy that I have had to meet these goals is to improve our site, to clean it up, and to restore some of our structures on the site. So I wanted to share with y'all tonight some of the work that we have done all over the site, and also at the Camden Battlefield and Longleaf Pine Preserve. Some of these things have been made possible by county ATAX grants, so I wanted to report some of that to you, and then also thank you for some of that funding as well. I would also like to invite each and every one of you to come out to the site. I would love to give you a private tour to show you some of the work that we've done. I've already spoken recently with Chairman Burns and Councilman Snodgrass, so thank y'all for coming out to visit, and I'd love to speak with the rest of you as well. So please come and see us sometime. I wanted to talk first about how we were able to fund many of these projects. Our biggest sources of funding have been from the state, from South Carolina Parks, Recs, and Tourism. In 2016, we received a $250,000 grant, and in 2018, we received a $200,000 grant that we're still working on right now. This is for deferred maintenance projects on our site, so it's not for new construction. But we've been able to touch a couple of our buildings with this money, and with the rest of the 200 from 2018, we'll be able to reach all the other buildings on our site, which I'm excited about. We've also received significant money, more than $37,000, from Kershaw County from the ATAX, 2016, 17, and 18. So thank y'all so much for that money. It has really helped us to make our site a premier destination for everyone. We've also received funds from the city of Camden and from some private foundations as well. So we are, we're able to do these projects, and we want to continue to work on this. What happened before I actually got here in Camden, Macaus Tavern was renovated in 2014 and 15. That is now a major source of revenue for us. We rent it out, and so that rental rate helps us to be sustainable as a nonprofit organization. We also use it as our programming space as well. So this has, this building has changed completely from how it was many years ago, and it is a modern, renovated programming space for us, and so there's some pictures for you. With the state PRT money, we were able to do a lot of work at the Kershaw Cornwallis House. Part of it was cleaning up the rental space areas, creating bridal suites and renovating our restrooms. And again, those rentals help us to stay sustainable so that we don't have to rely as much on county and city and other entities. We have also, though, repaired a lot at the site as well. There's been a lot of water damage over the years, and recent hurricanes have not helped that. And so that is a dangerous space for our collection, and also our visitors and our staff too. So we've been able to clean up a lot of that and make those repairs, both in, up on the third floor, which is our collection storage, and then also in some of the public areas as well. Another major project has been improving our gift shop. We have tried to make it more accessible for anybody who wants to come, so we added a ramp on the outside of it, which is used every week, I would say, whether by wheelchairs or strollers or people with other mobility issues. We were able to repair a lot of the damage in this house, which was originally built in 1830, and make it a much nicer spot where everybody who comes into Historic Camden, this is their first spot. So this is sometimes the first thing that people see off the interstate whenever they're visiting our county. So we wanted to clean it up, make it a nicer space, and some of the Kershaw County ATAX money helped with this project as well. We've also been able to do some other projects on site too, repairing or replacing roofs, like on the Blacksmith Forge. We've expanded our public restrooms for bigger projects and bigger, excuse me, bigger events for tour buses to come in, things like that. We went from two women's toilets to six, plus a family bathroom. So we're really trying to build that infrastructure on the site for continued growth for us. We've also cleaned up our nature pond, or, excuse me, our pond on the Nature Trail, and we've been able to have a free fishing rodeo in partnership with SCDNR. And actually, another one of those is coming up on April 27, I believe. Recently, we also renovated our readout, which is the Earthen Fort up next to the Kershaw House. Thank you to Chairman Burns for actually coming out and speaking at that as we unveiled it to the community. This was a major project with the Lugolf, Elgin, JROTC, with Eagle Scouts, and other Boy Scout troops as well, and some other community members who have helped us to rebuild this in a more authentic way, and that was partially from a grant from the Central Carolina Community Foundation. So that was a really fun project. We're actually still working on it. Then, of course, as y'all know, in 2017, we acquired 476 acres of the battlefield. We call that the Camden Battlefield and Longleaf Pine Preserve. We have been especially working extensively on the reforestation project, which is a multi-decade-long project that we have started to bring back the longleaf pine ecosystem at the battlefield preserve. So we've been working with Boy Scouts, we've been working with inmates. Kershaw County has also come out to help. Thank you to the Public Works Department, who has been removing some of these big giant stacks of trees that we have. We have also been working with Eagle Scouts and other groups there to create interpretive signage and new trails, and to really do some work out there. We want this to be a place for history, as well as natural resources and recreation, so we are working more towards that. We have a lot of future plans. We don't want to stop right here. We want to keep on going. And so we have more deferred maintenance work to do on each of our buildings. We are looking to do new exhibits, new interpretation of the site, also to get climate control for our collection. The log cabins, for example, and the Craven House, they don't have any kind of air conditioning or heating, and so that's not good for the objects that are under our care, so we need to invest in that. We're looking at replacing the fencing around the site, finishing up the readout and doing another cannon exhibit, because we have three 18th century cannons to work with. There's also going to be a new visitor center right next door to us, so we want to leverage that position right next to it. We're going to be the first stop for people visiting Kershaw County from that building, and so we really want to continue to improve the site and look good for the deluge of visitors that we're going to be getting with that. Another big project that we have is a pavilion that we'd like to build at the battlefield. Right now, there's no restrooms out there. There's no cover. It's a very primitive site. We'd love to be able to bring school buses and tour buses and all kinds of people up there, and that's difficult to do without restrooms. So that is a big project that we are working on this year, as well as continuing the forestry work out there. And then finally, we have a total of eight structures, not including a future pavilion. We have 104 acres at our, at our regular site, the one on Broad Street, and we have 476 acres at the battlefield. So this is a tremendous amount of space and structures to take care of, and all of that needs help and needs investment, and Kershaw County so far has been helping us with all of this. We look forward to continuing our partnership with y'all, and I just wanted to thank council, as well as the ATAX Committee for your support of Historic Camden and all of these efforts. That's all I've got.
Great turnout on Saturday. Let's open for questions. Mr. Bozard.
Thank you. Sure, that presentation. Well, one of the dealings you had was the Stevens Foundation. I'm not familiar with that. Who is that?
The Stevens Foundation is out of Kershaw, South Carolina, and they have worked with us for a number of years, helping us especially with roof projects, so roof replacement and repair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snodgrass.
Spencer, thanks for coming, and thank you for your update. So isn't there a significant anniversary coming up for the Revolutionary War?
Yes, we have. Coming up in 2020, we have the 240th anniversary of the Battle of Camden, and then in 2026, that will be the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So we are on the cusp of some major anniversaries that we are so excited to celebrate. 2020 will also actually be the 50th anniversary of Historic Camden opening too, so that's going to be a big year for us. I think this is also why I'm trying to invest so much and spend so much time on cleaning up the site and being a great place for people, so that we can look good for all the people that want to come celebrate with us.
I think we'd all agree that the Southern Campaign of the Revolutionary War had a significant impact on the outcome, correct?
Absolutely.
And how important did Camden play in that Southern Campaign?
Well, we were really, the main turning point, I would say. A lot of people say that they're the turning point, but it was because of the Battle of Camden that the leadership on the patriot side changed from Horatio Gates to Nathaniel Green. And so Nathaniel Green ended up, his tactics ended up really helping us turn the tide of the war, and so Camden's incredibly important in that. It can be difficult for us to tell the story of a loss compared to some of the other sites out there, but we have a very rich history to tell here, and still some great outcomes from something that was ultimately a loss.
One more question, and I'm getting to a point. So wouldn't you say that there is a new movement kind of in the study of history of the Southern Campaign? So we would agree that in the next couple of years, probably more people that are really realizing that the history they were taught in school, you know, left out a major part of this, and so we're kind of in the cusp of probably a lot of new people that are going to be interested in this. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, one question. Thanks for being here tonight. For the period of time that you've been receiving ATAX funds, I'm just curious, what's the trend on attendance? Have you seen increased visits and good ROI on attendance?
Yes, we have seen some steady increasing, and then also, basically from, in 2016, we had about 15,000 or so people, and then in 2017 and 18, we had about 19,000 or 20,000. So we have seen an increase in attendance from the 2016 numbers. I got here in 2016, so I don't have the earlier numbers to hand, but yes, we have seen some increasing since 2016.
One follow-up. So what are you projecting as far as attendance increases based on the battlefield improvements and all the other amenities and things you discussed as aspirations?
That's a good question. We are continuing to anticipate further growth, especially with the visitor center that will be open in 2020, and so we're anticipating higher visibility from that. With the battlefield, we're actually having trouble keeping track of how many people are up there, because we don't have a site up there. We don't have a building right now, and so I think as we figure out how to count the number of people that actually utilize that site, that's something that will also increase our numbers and really help to illuminate what the battlefield does for us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? Very proud of you indeed, young lady, and well done. Let us know how we can help, and of course, we're looking forward to this visitor center. And part of that, Mr. Carpenter, had a very big role in making sure that happened. Thank you, Vic. Ma'am, anything further? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move into the next item of business, which is approval of minutes. I believe there will be an amendment here, so let's first get it on the table. Let's have an approve, a motion to approve the minutes, and we'll move on into a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snodgrass, second? Second for Mr. Gardner. With that, I go to Mr. Gardner for an amendment, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a, let me pass those down, please. I think we need to add, before the discussion on the engineering, I would like to add Mr. Carpenter's briefing on the, that he gave to council concerning the mega site. This just kind of wraps up the reason for the executive session.
We'll make the amendment, and then we'll discuss it.
I'd like to amend the minutes from the last meeting to include Mr. Carpenter's briefing to council concerning the engineering on the mega site.
Very good. That's on page two. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Snodgrass. Mr. Gardner, discussion?
Yeah, this just kind of summarizes the reason for going into executive session, and we would insert that before Mr. Bozard's motion to go into executive session. I think this just wraps up, talks a little bit about where we came from in economic development, where we're going to on the mega site. I think it's pertinent to explaining what happened with economic development there, and I'd like to enter that into the minutes.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd have no issue with it. It's already a matter of public record and recorded on video, so.
Very good. Other discussion? I would say that there was a lot of discussion about how much information was available to the public, and it was all available. And that's for the record on that, and I think that's a good amendment. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, members of council. Thank you as well for the time. Why wasn't this put into minutes to start with?
Mr. Gardner?
Well, it is on video and record, but it is... Well, it is on video and record, but it is not in our minutes per se. So I just want to make sure that it's in the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, but my question was why? I mean, why now? Why not then?
Yeah, Mary, please.
Mr. Jones, it was an oversight on my part. That's the only reason it wasn't in there.
You know what? And to hear you say that, I'm okay with it because you do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
I'm done with it.
Thank you very much. But anyway, I would add to Mr. Gardner's point that there was a great deal of discussion about disclosure. And certainly, that was what Mr. Carpenter laid out before in the public forum before we went into executive session. So it's very clear on that point. Any further discussion with that? Well, let's move on the motion to amend the agenda by adding the full.
Minutes.
Yeah, we're getting there. By amending the agenda based on your.
The minutes, not the.
The minutes, excuse me. Thank you. With that, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And the minutes, did I get that right, Mr. Carpenter, are amended? And now we move on the motion to amend the minutes, to vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. And when the minutes as amended are adopted. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is a proclamation for Food for the Soul. It's at Tab B and on the screen on the anniversary, on their 10th anniversary. And the critical word to look for here is ministry. Let me read this. Proclamation honoring and recognizing Food for the Soul on occasion of their 10th anniversary. Wow. Whereas in 2008, several Kershaw County residents envisioned a ministry that would serve the hungry and homeless in the community. With the financial gifts of two local residents, they started to build their dream. A volunteer board began meeting in December of 2008. The first meal was served on Wednesday, September 9, 2009, and was a partnership with Mount Moriah Baptist Church in Camden. Food for the Soul started by partnering with Mount Moriah to expand its program by initially adding one day of service per week. And whereas in December of 2010, Food for the Soul completed construction on a new facility at the United Way of Kershaw County Campus. And in November 2011, Food for the Soul opened its doors for the first time to overnight guests due to inclement weather. And whereas Food for the Soul is an independent 501(c)(3) organization and serves lunch to an average of 60 people a day. The shelter is open seven days a week, and for those needing a place to sleep, wash their clothes, and eat dinner, breakfast is served to approximately 30 guests a day. On Monday, the soup kitchen's meal-on-the-go program delivers food to Bethune and Cassett, serving those who live in the outlying areas. Whereas, Food for the Soul also serves as the emergency shelter for Kershaw County residents with handicaps or disabilities. In addition to the staff that prepares meals and manages and cleans the shelter, a part-time case manager works with guests to find permanent housing, employment, or fulfill any special needs that they may require. Now therefore, let it be known that Kershaw County Council commends, recognizes, and celebrates the 10th anniversary of Food for the Soul, appreciates its good attitude of partnership through which it has participated in activities which have impacted the lives of countless numbers of our citizens, and offers its fervent best wishes for the continued success over the next 10 years of operation and well into the future. Can we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Don't move.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Snodgrass. Discussion. Mr. Bozard, you want to lead off?
Yes, please.
Please, sir. Go right ahead.
I want to thank all of them for what they've done. I definitely agree we've got some help coming, I hope, by a golf course and golf, excuse me, the different activities we have that's raising money. But anyway, I'd like to ask everybody to back all these activities they have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Sure, I just want to affirm the affirmative or the positive contribution this organization makes to our community. I'm a part of a church that is a part of feeding on Sundays, and we're in partnership with them supplying that Sunday meal. So it's just great that we live in a community that the government, that is not the answer here, but in this, it's private citizens who've come together, who have seen the need and who have seen and recognized that there are people that are marginalized, people that fall through the nets and through the cracks. And out of love for neighbor, we come together to take care of our own. And I think that is significant for Kershaw County. There's no other county our size around that has the type of private nonprofit organizations the way that we do. So we all should be proud.
Absolutely. Other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Are there any members of Food for the Soul that are here?
There are two here. Please.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for what you do. I have had contact with them, it was about two years ago, with someone that I knew that needed help. And they were the one organization that I could contact, or I was given the number that called me back, got with me absolutely, went and helped this individual get back on their feet. So thank you very much for that.
Other comments? It's an outward and visible sign of an inward and spiritual grace, as we say. Wouldn't that be the word, Reverend?
Amen.
Amen, right? And all the people say amen. Compassion comes through you, but it comes from a higher authority. We are delighted to be able to honor you this way. With that, we move to a vote. And all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. If you'd come forward and bring your board members, we'll take a quick picture.
since day one, since they opened at Mount Moriah. And on behalf of Food for the Soul, I just want to say thank you. We are so grateful that you have recognized what we do. We're grateful and privileged to be able to serve in this community. We work very hard to bring hope and help to the many in our community that need it. And I just want to say thank you for recognizing us.
Bless you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Terrific, everybody. Thank you. All right, we move to the next item, which is an ordinance, a third reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County to amend the Kershaw County Uniform Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Section 3-2-5, to amend the regulation for regulations for accessory structures and uses. This was first introduced by Mr. Bozard. Mr. Bozard, would you like to introduce this for discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. What is on the screen is not what's.
We'll get to it. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you.
I second his point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, turn it off and then we'll keep moving. Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
I'd like to place in motion for a third reading of this ordinance for the, excuse me, for the containers.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second to place it into discussion. Now, Mrs. Snodgrass, I believe you have an amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, Chairman, members of council, would like to make a motion that we define shipping container in our unified code and add it to our definition of accessory buildings. And as a result, shipping containers will then come under the precedent of our already established general requirements of accessory buildings.
Okay. Can we have a second on that?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. And now can we put it on the screen?
Yeah, what was on the screen was what is, was first reading is not.
That's exactly right.
And it wasn't correct.
So let's go ahead and go to, if you'd help Danny advance it. Go ahead, Danny.
One more. There you go. That's what's on the table that I have just moved to amend.
Okay, very good. Why don't you lead the discussion, Mrs. Snodgrass?
I believe we began this task of amending our unified code with noble intentions to move with consumer demand of cost-effective accessory building solutions. Shipping containers have become the go-to solution for some, for consumers who desire a low cost, but yes, secure accessory building option. The fact that our unified code restricted any use of these structures, I believe, is inconsistent with who we are as Kershaw County. We are individuals who respect our personal decisions and property, and we know how to be good neighbors. I'm convinced that my amendment will help us do these things. In defining what a shipping container is, we leave no gray area to be defined by someone behind a desk. I was concerned after second reading, when the latest amendment left, a large gray area of what a shipping container is and how it should be treated, as a piece of personal property, as a structure. That said, I believe council was correct in passing it because it moved the pendulum away from the very restrictive wording that came, that first came to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This amendment not only gives us definition of what a container is, it also uses already established precedent to provide guidelines to ensure that all property rights are being protected and valued. Under my amendment, those in rural zoning districts will have great freedom to use a container as they see fit, as this is already the precedent for accessory structure in those districts. As we move closer into more densely populated areas, the established precedent on accessory structure gives guidance on setbacks and respecting the property lines of neighboring property owners. I urge my members of county council to join me in supporting my amendment.
Very good. Any further discussion there? Okay. Other discussion? Now, you had the second, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you very much. I received a call some way months ago from a fellow up off of 97 that owned 26 acres of land. And he said that he's trying to get a container put on his yard, but couldn't do it. I don't pretend to know what's in every regulation there is, so I had to check, see what he was talking about. I found out that the regulation forbids containers. And that's when I started asking questions and started to try to get this thing changed. And that's what this is all about. It's the fact to try to do, and I agree with all of y'all out there, it's your property, you should be able to do with it what you want. However, under certain guidelines, that might not always be a good thing. I have a saying in a plaque in my house, and I don't mean what I'm getting ready to say by racist, bigots, anything else, because this is history that I'm getting ready to repeat. When the white man discovered this country, Indians were running it. There was no taxes, there was no debt, women did all the work, and white men come along and thought he could improve on a system like that. I can say that because I'm part Indian Cherokee. You know, I'm not trying to, as I said, I'm not racist, biased, anything else. That's the way history was. You don't have to take my word for it. Look up your history books. We need to do something with it, and I agreed with the people of Kershaw County, and that's why we're attempting to do this. We had a little bit of discussion getting down to the third, excuse me, the second vote, that brought up that there might be a technicality in there that we couldn't do. So what Mr. Snodgrass over here is doing is taking away that little technicality in there so we can make this thing good for everybody. Thank you, sir.
Let me ask, just to interject before, we have other comments. Mrs. Snodgrass, there's also a chart. Is that going to be shown on?
Yes, I think it's the next page. There it is.
There it is. I'd like for you to explain to everybody how this brings several parts of county ordinances together in one document. Go ahead, please.
Sure. So I've been working with county attorney, Mr. DeBose, and Michael Conley on this. So this is a chart of, you know, recognized accessory structures in our county. You see anything on there from pool houses to workshops and things of that nature? So this just reflects if my amendment would pass and if this would have passed third reading, then essentially a shipping container then becomes an accessory building. And I think it's important to realize that the language that is in, that is in my amendment is not new language that I just, that we just came up with. This is accessory building structure language that is precedent in our county and has been on the books for years. So we're not, we're not giving any, I'm not presenting anything new other than just a new idea, hey, these things are accessory buildings, let's just call them an accessory buildings and move on.
Let me just further expand, just explain the chart a little further. I asked this to be put up because it's a brilliant piece of work by Mr. Conley and Mrs. Snodgrass. Would you explain the columns and the rows and the Ps and the Ns and so on?
Well, and Mr. Conley can probably help me on this, but I'm assuming the word P, the letter P means permitted? Yes. So you've got your different zoning districts. So you've got R15, R10. So if you're like me, you live in Valley Park or you live in Arrowood, most likely you're in a R15 or even a R20 zone. So it just lets you know that within that zone, those different things are permitted. Now, the thing with my amendment, if you're in a rural zone, RD1 or RD2, I mean, there's hardly any, and Mr. Conley can correct me on this, but there's hardly any restrictions on this. I mean, there's not a limit to how many number accessory buildings you can have, that sort of thing. And so that's, for me, that's the beauty of it. But this is just a chart that just shows you in each zoning district, and I believe these are all residential zoning districts, correct, Mr. Conley?
That's all.
Oh, that's all that we have? Okay. And so out of all the districts, this is kind of how each accessory building, how they're governed, if you will. So sorry for the long.
Now, let me just say also, Mr. Jones and Mr. Conell had some taskings of the staff at the last time we met. So I'm presuming all those taskings were met. Any further discussion, Mr. Jones? Mr. Conell?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one or two questions and a few comments. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Conley, the first question I have is I just want to understand, under Section 325-4, what are we trying to accomplish with that first sentence there, accessory structures, except for shipping containers? It seems to me as I read that, that it would say unless you have a principal structure on a particular lot, you would not be able to have a shipping container.
Unfortunately, that's, that shouldn't be in there.
Okay, well, I'm happy to make the amendment.
Yeah, please do.
That is the case.
Because with my discussion with the county, with county attorney, that we left that. That's because basically that would, that would not allow containers to be on a lot by themselves.
On a vacant one. You'd have to have a principal structure.
Principal structure. But my amendment, my amendment, my intention would be that if you do own the lot beside you and you wanted to put the container there by itself, you know, go right ahead. So that's a clear.
Sure, that's my thought. All right, I think we should discuss further on any other issues, and I'd be glad to make the amendment if appropriate.
Which paragraph was that, so I can track?
3, 02.5-4.
And where was that specifically?
First sentence.
I'd welcome amendment on that.
And you wanted to strike?
Except for shipping containers. We could just delete that portion. And I think it would keep the spirit of where the process has brought us this far.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr.
Anything else, Mr. Conell?
Yeah, just one or two things. So initially, the law on the books, as it sits now until third reading, either is approved or not, says that you can, if it meets a building code, you could use a shipping container as your home, essentially. But you couldn't use it for storage. How ironic. So that's why I think Mr. Bozard was initially inclined to try to get the books corrected. Of course, I've been on council for a short period of time, and Mr. Snodgrass even shorter. So these things were passed a long time ago, but you try to correct them as best as you can. Then I think after the next reading that we had, it kind of flipped it. Some of the language said that you could use it as a storage structure and accessory structure, but you couldn't use it as your home. My position has always been that these are some of the strongest things you'll find on the planet as far as structures go. And Kershaw County, or the state, or federal government for that matter, shouldn't be telling people what they can build their homes out of, whether it's concrete, metal, or wood, as long as it meets the codes and is safe and just meets the industry practices and standards. So I want to make sure from Mr. DeBose that, assuming, well, I don't assume the amendment, as it's written, Mr. Snodgrass's motion would, you'd be able to use a shipping container as a primary structure or residence if it met the building codes?
Yes, Mr. Conell, you're correct. As it stands now, prior to third reading, the.
As it stands now, prior to third reading, the law as we stand right now, because we haven't had third reading, says that shipping containers cannot be used as accessory buildings, right now. Mr. Snodgrass's amendment says, in effect, that shipping containers, if you look at his amendment, are defined as an accessory building. Is that not correct, Mr. Conley? Mr. Conley needs to get involved, is that not correct, Mr. Conley? So, as we speak, it says a shipping container cannot be an accessory building, doesn't say it can't be a residence, that's altogether a different situation. It says it can't be an accessory building. Mr. Proposed amendment by Mr. Snodgrass says, by definition, that a shipping container is defined, by definition, as an accessory building. Is that not correct?
That's correct. Okay, thanks, I just wanted that to be a matter of record and have our legal heavyweight weigh in on that.
Mr. Conell and I have discussed it, Mr. Conley and I have discussed it, and I apologize to Mr. Snodgrass, these amendments were going through, when we did take it out, Mr. Snodgrass is correct about that. The last one he saw does not have that in there, accessory structures except for, that was stricken out by the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
So I would say, just because, this is what was in the packet, and this was what before the public, so I actually would, Ben, would you be open to make an emotion to amend? To amend my amendment to strike that?
Yeah.
So that we can follow Robert's rules of order and follow the role of counsel?
I actually plan to do that unless there are any other.
Let's just see if there's other discussion, Mr. Jones, you're.
Let him go ahead.
Okay, yeah, is there any further discussion before we make this conclusive amendment?
There will be some more discussion, but I won't, I would like Ben to go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
Yeah, on the ad mercy, that setback three foot, I thought it had to be 10, is this changed from the building codes?
No, sir. That's the same language that we've had in the ordinance.
Three foot?
As long as it's in your rear setback, yes, sir.
Good.
No, it ain't okay, because I've always been led as 10 foot, you have all structures 10 foot off property lines.
No, sir. I mean, no other language was changed to that ordinance except adding the shipping containers in it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Conell, you want to formulate an amendment to this amendment to the amendment?
Sure, I'll ask Mr. DeBoz to hold my hand to the extent necessary, but I would move to amend the amendment that Mr. Snodgrass has put forward, just to delete under section 3, colon 2.5-4, the first sentence under that paragraph, to delete, comma, except for shipping containers, which is underlined, comma, and that's my motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass, good time for discussion, anybody? Okay, we'll now move through a series of.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to make an amendment. I want my amendment to say that we accept third reading, just as we did for second reading, to no regulation for shipping container at this point in time.
So no regulation?
Correct, it stands as it is with what Mr. Tucker made at the last meeting.
So you want to revert to the language in the second reading, and that is in the package still, I believe? Just for clarity?
Yes, it's in the package.
It's in the package, and that was adopted. Is there a second?
A point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. DeBoz, do we not first have to clear the first amendment off the table, or can we, so we can keep one?
Well, you can do that, or you can go ahead and vote. The way it stands right now is understandably, let's get clear about this, is understandably, Mr. Snodgrass made an amendment to amend the ordinance on third reading, which is, if you go back, Mary, scroll back, just show them the one before council. That's the ordinance before council, that was read on second reading, that is the ordinance before you.
Correct, that's what I've amended.
So you've said the ordinance before county council, that one, you want to amend?
I amended that one. Mr. Conell has amended my amendment.
Well, he amended hers just by striking out words. And so your point is that your amendment needs to be dealt with first, because if it passes, then that would be third reading?
Yes, I believe so. I was just saying, I think we probably should handle Mr. Conell's amendment first, and then we'll go to Mr. Jones's amendment.
Yes, that's right, you can handle his and go to his, he can still make his amendment.
And I know this is very confusing, because I mean, Robert's rule of orders is kind of confusing, but when you get an amendment, then you move backwards, all right? So we've gotten to Mr. Conell, so we've got to deal with Mr. Conell's before we can then come back to mine.
Mr. Conell's, whether it passes or fails, will not preclude Mr. Jones from making his amendment.
Right, he'll still be able to then follow up and make a, yes.
Okay, so with that, we move to Mr. Conell's amendment, to Mr. Snodgrass's amendment, which is to delete except for shipping containers on paragraph 3-2-4, and on the second page, it's shown there in the paragraph. So we've had our discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, so it passes.
And just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, because I think Mr. Snodgrass has asked this previously, the way it is right now, a shipping container can be on a lot.
Correct.
Just like any accessory building.
Correct.
Period. And is that correct, Mr.? Just so we'll get clear about this, the public's clear?
Yes, sir.
The way it is now, under Mr. Snodgrass's amendment, accessory building can be put on any lot, subject to the tables, which just deal with performance requirements, as the principal use, without any other building there, correct, Mr.?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Hey, now, I think Mr. Jones.
Yeah, now, so now my, we're back to my amendment.
Mr. Snodgrass, I'll take it here. What were you going to say, Mr. DeBoz?
We're back to Mr. Snodgrass's amendment, his first one's on the table now, as amended.
So Mr. Snodgrass's amendment is to add the language from the previous existing language elsewhere in our ordinances to make them consistent, that is, to add accessories and shipping containers into a single ordinance as we, you have it on the table, can you move to the headline, the next page? First page? Nope, yep, that one. So, with that one, we're ready to vote.
I had an amendment on the floor during discussion. I think you need to go with.
Let's go ahead and deal with your amendment, and I'll take it from there.
I made the amendment motion already, so I'm just waiting on a second.
Okay, let's move to the language from the second reading. Yep, that's it, it's about a half a page. Do we have a second to Mr. Jones's amendment? There is no second.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, thank you members of county council.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
May I?
I think you do discussion when we get to the next vote, and I'll bring you up.
I think we're working on the amendment now, we're working on the discussion.
Please, go ahead, let's go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Good point.
Again, thank you all. You know, I was shot down on that, and that's fine, I understand that, but I'm going to tell you something, that I met with Mr. Snodgrass today, we went to lunch, he called me, he said, I want to sit down and talk with you. And basically, right now, and I've spent all day working on this, shipping containers are illegal in Kershaw County right now, anywhere, anyhow, maybe except on a construction site, they're illegal at this point in time. By supporting Mr. Tucker's motion at the last reading or the second reading, it takes three readings, well, this is third reading, so that was shot down, but let me just say this. Mr. Snodgrass's amendment allows something that is not allowed currently. Mr. Snodgrass's proposed ordinance allows shipping containers and accessory structures. The present ordinance does not allow shipping containers or storage units. The proposed ordinance, based on the fact that it just got shot down on mine, I think is in the right direction. My preference is certainly that the ordinance passed on second reading, and that allows shipping containers without any regulation, was where I stood. I've been saying all along, though, even without regulation, I've been saying all along that shipping containers should be allowed as storage units, and I have said all along that they could be enforced under the current laws we already have on the books, which is what Mr. Snodgrass has done. This ordinance, as proposed, is better than what we have now, because we have nothing. You can't have a shipping container, which is, shipping containers are not allowed as storage units. It does allow shipping containers to be used in the same as other accessory structures like storage buildings, sheds, and workshops. I have a concern, when I looked in my agenda packet, maybe somebody can help me, but I think it was confusing, all the information that was in there, I didn't think this should even be in there, it doesn't even apply to what we're doing tonight. And I had some concerns, Mr. Togel, if I mispronounced, you were very eloquent up there, you know, I believe that if people get up and speak to us, we don't need to hold down your passion. You know, we work for you, we work for the folks, if you're upset with us, we should be able to take it, if we can't take it, we're in the wrong business. And believe me, I've let a lot roll off my shoulders in the past 13 years, but I want to say this. Mr. Snodgrass, I appreciate your reaching out to me, I appreciate your leadership that you showed, I appreciate the fact that you've taken a pretty tough situation, I think our process has been discombobulated, I think our process has been horrible, it's been confusing, it's been misleading, it's been stressful, not on me, but on a lot of folks who have shipping containers already. And I think what you did is, I commend you, it was a piece of work, and I'm going to support you tonight, I'm going to tell you this too, you have successfully done what nobody else has done, you've gotten, well, maybe, you may not have seven votes, but if you get seven votes, you would have done what nobody else has been able to do on this council with a major issue such as this. So, thank you for reaching out to me, I've enjoyed working with you on this, I might not agree with the whole thing, but bottom line is, I think that this is a good piece of work for the citizens to allow shipping containers on your properties, based on if you look at everything that we did. And too, Mr. Conell, thank you for reaching out yesterday, and also thank you for your amendment tonight, you're a good steward to taxpayers, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Other comments? Let me summarize what I think I saw.
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Conell.
I was just going to say, you know, this is, I think, aligned kind of with the signed deregulation that happened a few years ago, it was a very convoluted and discombobulated process, but that's kind of the nature of it. If you want to get involved, I think most of our cell phone numbers are available, and a lot of us answer calls around the clock, in spite of family obligations and work obligations. Reach out, we'd love to hear from people, and to debate, to learn, sometimes argue, and always be educated on the issues. But the signed deregulation took a little while, but it was important to accomplish, and this is actually, though somewhat complicated as Mr. Snodgrass explained, this is deregulation, this is actually an increase on the spectrum of rights, in giving folks a little bit more opportunity to do stuff with their property that they want to, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I agree with Mr. Conell, exactly, this is deregulation, what we're doing tonight, it's fact and simple, you can't own one now, you can't have one on your building, so this is a deregulation, and again, thank you all, I'm talking to you and to you, thank you.
I hope the Boy Scout is not losing interest, you may be seeing history in the making. Let me just summarize from my viewpoint, Mr. Bozard found a problem with our regulations in response to a citizen like you sitting out there or watching elsewhere. It was brought in here with the help of the Planning and Zoning Board, they found it to be difficult, because it was complete, competing regulations, and one of them was very restrictive, the one that was restricting was shipping containers. And we heard chapter and verse, as we properly should, from citizens that felt this was encroachment. The problem was, the encroachment existed for years until Mr. Bozard found it, and the planning and zoning people turned it around. The first product was okay, but flawed, and we heard from the people again, and we did another run with Mr. Jones and Mr. Tucker, Mr. Tucker making the first on that, and we passed it on the second reading. And we found we had some further problems, and that turned into taskings to the staff to go find these inconsistencies between accessories and offsets, right, all this fancy language. And we had our third public hearing on the thing, and we heard again from the people of the county. It seems to me messy, but democracy and progress, I think. And the staff was working steady, we were working hard, and the people of the county were heard from. And then we get in here tonight, and we think we have a rational approach. In every case, it lessens the restrictions and opens up the way for our people in the county to have better control over their property. And so I thank Mr. Conley, especially for the hard work and staff work you did, along with Mr. DeBoz. I call the question now, are we ready to vote on the amended amendment to this point, which is, we've already passed the part that strikes the language on the screen there, that takes shipping containers off of that page. We now move to Mr. Snodgrass's amendment as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and it passes. Now we move to the amendment as amended twice, and with that, if there's no further discussion, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and it passes. And so that makes it a matter of ordinance, and I think the people of the county have been heard from, and I thank you very much. We move to the next item, which is now new business, and while the sheriff has been standing there patiently for two hours. Item number one, sheriff's office and a JAG grant, it's up on the screen, there are two parts, tab D. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it, and we'll get going with the sheriff?
This is Chairman, members of council, Sheriff Bone approached me about soliciting a grant, two grants actually, he wished to present it to councils well to get councils concurrence and support for where he is looking to go, so Sheriff Bone is here tonight to go over the details of the grant.
You want to put a motion to approve, and then put it in discussion? Or we just hear from them first?
Yeah, I'll hear from him.
Okay, Sheriff, come on forward, and then we'll take it into parliamentary procedures. Go ahead, sir.
How's my, mine's my favorite county council in all of Kershaw County doing tonight?
I'm doing good.
I don't know about a green tie, though.
My bowtie was in the cleaners. I come before you tonight to ask your permission for two grants that I want to put in for, I want to start out with the good news, I'm not putting in for a grant for a shipping container. I'm going to try to get through this with no amendments. We are asking for two grants, and what I've done is, since I've been at the sheriff's office for two months, I've done my own assessments, and one of the two grants is going to be for a drug investigator. This is a JAG grant, which is federal money, they're going to pay 90% of the grant, Kershaw County pays 10%. This is a 90-10 match for three years, this will be for both the grants I want to talk about tonight, I don't know if we want to talk about both of them and then go in for a discussion, or one at a time, or how you want to break it up, but I'm going to start out with the drug grant. First of all, we haven't been promised anything, all I'm asking is your permission to put in for this grant, because we do have a 10% match that we need to commit to from the county. Unfortunately, this grant's due Friday, that's why we're kind of getting up here tonight trying to rush through everything, but I do feel there's an immediate need for both of these positions, I'm not asking for these positions because there happens to be grant money, I feel like we do need both of these positions. The drug investigator position is something that our previous sheriff, Jim Matthews, asked for last year, I think after being at the sheriff's office for eight years and doing an eight-year assessment, he felt the need for a drug slot. In my two months coming in and looking over all the records, I concur with him, I agree. So you've got two back-to-back sheriffs that agree that we need a drug slot, an additional drug slot at Kershaw County. Kind of give you a little numbers of what we're dealing with with drugs, 2016 to 2018, those are pretty significant years, of course, we don't have any stats from 19 yet, we're just getting started, but for full years from 2016 to 2018, we're looking at three times the number of reported overdose calls we've had in Kershaw County. That's a significant climb in just two years. Also looking at three times the number of meth cases in Kershaw County in that same two-year period of time. Two times as many drug cases, or gun cases by our drug unit in the same period of time. We see a climb. One of the first persons I called was our coroner, David West, I think he's here with us tonight, and back here, and I asked him about some of the stats he's been dealing with, with drugs-related stats as far as our deaths, and overdose deaths, he really surprised me with the number.
We also have Mr. Napper here, Sheriff, so, from the Alpha Center.
Yes, we do, we have Mr. Napper, I was getting to him next, he was my next on the list here. Overdose deaths in 2017 in Kershaw County, we had a record-setting five overdose deaths. 2018, we broke the record again at 37. That's a great climb from five to 37 over a one-year period of time. We know this, this is something we need to do our part about. Let me be crystal clear, I'm not telling you that we can increase my. I'm not telling you that we can increase my drug unit size and we're going to take care of the drug problem, I'm not going to lie to you, there's a lot of moving parts involved, and there's a lot of different, uh, areas that's, that needs to work to get the drug problem taken care of. EMS reported ninety-nine drug overdose calls last year, and next on my list was the Alpha Center. This has got to be a group project where we're going to have multiple different agencies involved in it, and Alpha Center is a, is a big contributor, I talked with Mr. Napper earlier today, and we said earlier, he is in the room, um, we really support Alpha Center, thank, thank a lot of them, and from what he told me on the drugs, just last year alone, we spent over one million dollars in Kershaw County on, on drug rehabilitation, that's about a hundred and seventy-five people, and they're currently got a seven-week waitlist, that's tough for an addict to know he's got to wait seven weeks to get some kind of treatment, and they're working on it, I can assure you that Alpha Center's working on the solution to that problem now. We also plan on putting together, we've already started some of the early phases on a countywide multi-agency drug task force. The significance here is that we're going to have everybody that has the ability to work drugs in Kershaw County on the same sheet of paper, um, and we're going to be working together on it, and that's going to be a force multiplier, my goal is to double the number of investigators we've got working drugs in Kershaw County, we're already off to a really good start. Another bonus to having a multi-jurisdictional drug task force is, there's a possibility we can extend this three-year grant to five years, now if we can extend it to five years, and that's going to be pending, you know, the grant money's still being available, it's going to also be pending our drug stats that we turn in each year, which I'm very confident we would not only meet, but exceed whatever stats any grant asks for. So we're looking at over a five-year period of time, uh, receiving about a half a million dollars in federal funds for this drug slot that would go in here, with only an investment from, from Kershaw County of fifty-six thousand over the same five-year period, which breaks down to an average of eleven thousand two hundred dollars a year to have a fully funded drug slot, but this does cover a vehicle, uh, vest, gun, fuel for the car, maintenance, everything is covered in this grant, and it would only be a cost to the taxpayers of eleven thousand two hundred dollars for this five years.
Let me just interrupt, uh, are you, is the council comfortable of taking these together, or would you like them separately?
Together.
Everybody's good with together, okay, please, Sheriff, go ahead.
Okay, the next grant we're going to put in for is for an SRO, uh, and it's under the same grant, the JAG grant, which is the, uh, Justice Assist, Justice Assistant Grant, it's federally funded also, uh, I don't have any experience with putting in for an SRO grant, but it is out there, we do want to put in for it, and again, neither one of these are guaranteed to us, we're just going to be applying for them this, uh, this Friday with your permission. But it mostly targets middle school and high school levels, currently in Kershaw County, we have a resource officer in every middle school and every high school except for one, which is our ATEC. So that is one of the positions we want to ask for also, is a, uh, is to grant for ATEC, which is not as much money for a resource officer as investigator because it's a little higher salary.
And just so staff knows, we have Mr. Smith here from the school, thank you.
Yes, we, we do have school, before I even asked for this grant, I, I met with our school members, uh, Dr. Robbins, who couldn't be here tonight, and as well as Billy Smith, who needs no introduction, I think everybody knows Billy Smith. Um, but, and they're in agreeance with me, and, uh, although no, no funding has been approved, and they have to go before board, just like I do, to be approved for any money, um, it's safe to say that they support the hiring of this, this resource officer, and that they do intend on supporting the sustainment of this position, uh, at the end of the three years. Again, this is a ninety to ten percent grant, I think the county could benefit a lot from it, and it's not just positions because it's, uh, you know, because it's on sale, and we can get a grant for it, these are positions we need, and we got money to fund them right now, or to fund ninety percent of them, I think it's a good time to go forward with them, and.
What's our total cost, Sheriff?
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute, yeah, oh, maybe we should hear that, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, for both slots, for the first year, which you know, the first year's the most expensive year, that's where we got to buy, you're looking at two vehicles and two, two of everything, but for both slots, total, Kershaw County's match would only be thirty thousand dollars, or thirty thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, that's for both positions for the first full year. After that, of course, this could be significantly less because we don't have to purchase vehicles and everything for startup.
But to Mr. Jones's point, it's a total of fifty-six thousand over the three years for both positions.
Yeah, now, the fifty-six thousand I mentioned earlier, this was over a five-year period for the drug grant, uh, and, and the SRO grant does not get extended, because we're a multi-jurisdictional drug position, there, there's an exception in this grant, uh, the way I read it is, we can, we can apply for two additional years, so that's looking at a total of five years that we can apply for, at a ninety-ten match each year, which is going to total the federal money coming out at about a half a million dollars that we can get from, uh, federal government, and the taxpayers would only pay fifty-six thousand over that whole five years.
Sheriff, you, you said you talked to Dr. Robbins as well, and I see Billy Smith is here, so you guys feel very comfortable, I know you can't speak for the school board, and you have to go before them, but you feel pretty comfortable that they would jump in at the very end of this SRO grant? I, I got you, okay, that's good enough, and I know that's all you can do tonight, Billy, thank you so much. Sheriff, I want to say this, if I may, uh, you're doing an outstanding job, you know, you make this easy for us, you come in here with a common sense approach, you know, I, I remember the first thing you said to me was, Jimmy, I'm not going to ask for any tax increase or budget increase in my budget, you folks have been very good to the Sheriff's Department over the last eight years, and you felt blessed, and you've reorganized it, you reconstructed, I mean, you have, if there's a role model for someone watching the taxpayers' money, you, you should, you are that role model, and, uh, I, I don't give compliments unless I mean them.
I'm glad this is being recorded tonight.
Yeah, well, I, I heard a rumor, I heard a rumor, and, and I'd like to ask you in front of the media and all God's people, and be honest with me, is it true that you and Joe Floyd were fighting over me for your chief's position?
I can neither confirm nor deny that at this time.
Anyway, no, listen, seriously, you, you and your guys are doing a fantastic job, I hear it everywhere I go, I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to support this tonight, because I think this is a good, good approach, I think it's good for our community, and, uh, just wanted you to know that, thank you so much for all you do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Uh, Mr. Connel.
Sheriff, does Jimmy know Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
He's given you a lot of compliments, I don't know if he knows her. Um, th, this is a, a cross-administration request, really, I mean, we heard it from Sheriff Matthews, and the need is manifest, it makes sense to be able to buy down costs that you probably need to incur based on a need in Kershaw County, so I'd support it as well.
Uh, the comments, Mr. Gardner.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to support this as well, then, you and I talked earlier today, but I do want to remind council that at the end of three years, this comes to us. Costs don't go away, we have to pick up these costs, uh, whether the school district picks up part of it, or we get to pick up part of it, at the end of the, at the end of the three years, or five years, if, if it's extended, that, uh, at that time, that ten percent becomes one hundred percent for us, so keep in mind that you're voting on this now, you may have to vote somewhere to find extra money in three years from now, whether that's in the form of a tax increase or whatever, so you have to keep that in mind, grants are great, I love grants, free money essentially, to a point, when it doesn't, when it's not free money, so just as a reminder that, that we, we will have to pick this up at some point in time down the road, uh, so it will not be free money at that time, but I am in favor, and I will support this.
Uh, Mr. Bozard?
Yes, just to be, um, clear on everything, and people out there can understand too, you've come in the county council tonight looking for that other ten percent, right?
Yes, sir.
And as Mr. Gardner said, in five years or whatever down the road, it's going to come back to us, it's going to come back to y'all out there. So what we do tonight is going to affect everybody down the road, so we got to ask ourselves, is this necessary? Do we need it? And I got to agree with the rest of my councilmen right now, yes, we do need it, it is necessary. So this is a necessary expense that we are going to vote on tonight, and I definitely do back this, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Snodgrass?
Yes, I, I just want to say, the, the beauty of, of what I see here is the, the different entities of our county that are coming together for this, Alpha Center, the Sheriff's Department, the school boards here, the county council, and, I mean, this is, in our type of community, this is how it should work, uh, all, all of these government entities should be in this, in this beautiful dance, if you will, uh, of, of really just wanting to, for the good of our community, to come together, so thank you, Sheriff, for bringing, um, all these players together, and, uh, presenting that in, in this way, so I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting this, and in five years, I'm excited about the economic growth that we're going to be having, that we are having, that's going to pay for this with no problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Jones first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Connel, you know, we talk about three, five, and, and they're exactly right, we will pick that cost up, whether it's ten of it or a hundred percent of it, you know, with the two officers, but with the age of this council, some of us won't even be alive in three to five years, probably, so I, I feel very comfortable with this, I can't even plan three weeks ahead, much less.
Speak for yourself.
Three to five years ahead, but anyway, thank you, Sheriff.
Uh, Mr. Connel?
Sure. Um, just wanted to remind everyone that the council voted recently, right, last year anyway, to participate in potential opioid litigation, and all these costs, I remember getting an opinion from our attorney at the time, can be attributed to costs in pharmaceutical litigation that's going on, so as long as we keep track of these things, even the, the monies, uh, that went to the Alpha Center, um, might go for that cost too, in fighting and combating opioid overdoses in Kershaw County, so whether it's costs related to Narcan, or a narcotics officer that, that ties to perhaps not meth, but opioids, um, we, we can use all of that whenever it comes to the right time at the settlement table.
Other comments? Let, let me see if I, oh, go ahead.
One quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much, one, one quick thing, you know, one thing that impresses me, and I got to get off this, I've, I've said too many good things about you already, but one thing that impresses me is that you don't think, like the old-school law enforcement, me, for example, lock them up, throw away the key, I can't tell you how it makes me feel to hear you talk about the rehabilitation part, with the, with the wonderful assets we have in our community, you know, and that really hits home with me, and so thank you for, and of course, you told me that I was old-school, that's the reason I thought that, but bottom line is, I appreciate your position on that and making it clear to everybody, thank you.
Motion?
Uh, no, let me just say, I've got to develop the motion here, uh, first of all, task force, terrific, I love the military term, you've got Paul Napper, uh, for whom we've relied on for a generation, you've got the coroner, you've got the school, I mean, the whole team lined up, that's wonderful, um, I, I think we're going to be a better county because we're a better county together. Let me get some points clear, uh, it, I'm going to formulate a motion, then I'm going to ask for somebody to make it, okay? We're going to approve two grants, how am I doing so far, I'm going to be very simple.
I think you're going in the right direction, yes, sir.
Uh, for, how many years?
Well, I have to apply each year, uh, the SRO grant will be up to three years, the drug grant will be up to five years.
Uh, help me formulate that into a motion, Mr. DeBoz, you're a genius at this kind of stuff.
I, I think right before you today, though, of these two grants and funding of the two grants, the local match is.
For how long, for one year?
One year, one year is all this grant is, right?
Yes, sir.
The next round will be another year, but the sheriff is making it clear that he would like a commitment to continue funding these grants, is that not correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, I got it, so approve two grants with, for one year to be renewed on an annual basis by county vote, how am I doing? Uh, maybe I'm making it too hard, but I think that's what we got to do, um, and let me ask you this, there, there's county funds at risk here, um, and this would start when? What fiscal year, next fiscal year, like one July, or?
Depends on how long it takes the process to grant, if they process the grant, it'll start during our fiscal year for the drug grant, the SRO grant won't start until August, beginning of the school year.
So it'll be roughly in a, in a, so we don't need to direct, I'm just trying to formulate the motion, we don't need to direct the administrator to find funds in this fiscal year, is that correct? It's fiscal year one July forward, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so it'll be a part of the next, of the budget process, Mr. Administrator, or, or we would take it out of the sheriff's budget?
Well, it would be included in the sheriff's budget.
Okay, everybody got that? So we direct the administrator to address the funding within the budget process coming up, is that close enough? Okay, let me try this out, Jimmy, help me out, we, the motion would read, we approve two grants for the sheriff, uh, for one year, annually, annually renewed by vote, and direct the administrator to find the money in the fiscal year budget process beginning one July, is that what we're going to say?
Direct him to put the money in the budget, that's what the sheriff wants.
Okay.
Put it in the budget.
Okay, everybody, you're going to use that language, direct, all right, maybe I can call for the motion? Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I attended a conference in Washington last year, and I had a bunch of information from Paul Napper's people over there, in Kershaw County alone, out of sixty-some thousand people we had, there was over seven, I want to say seven, I might be one or two off, prescriptions written for everybody in this county for that opium drug, whatever that pill is.
I think it was.
What, what can the, what can the Sheriff's Department do about something like this?
It, it would be a drug investigator, uh, you know, they could follow up on it, I think, uh, DHEC also has people that follow up on prescription frauds, if that's the case, we do intend, I, I did talk with our coroner earlier today about what we can do as the sheriff's office early on, and he's going to start contacting us whenever they get a call about a drug overdose, if we're not already there, he's going to make sure we get contacted to send an investigator to the scene, so we can see if we can follow up on anything there. Kind of the, the business of working drugs is you've got to be there before or during something, when something happens, it's hard to do anything afterwards, but, uh, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to rule that out, we're going to try every angle we can get.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to restate it, and I will look for a motion, we approve two grants for the sheriff, uh, for one year to be renewed annually as part of the budget process, and direct the administrator to find the funds for fiscal year beginning one July.
So move.
Okay, we have first, Mr. Snodgrass's second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, uh, now we can have further discussion if you wish, I think we're, I think we're at the point of, of, uh, voting, uh, thank you, Sheriff, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and let's get that task force going, it's a pass unanimously, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a great night, thanks, Billy.
And Sheriff, you couldn't find a better chief than Knottville.
We now have moved to item number two, uh, we have an airport commission appointment vacancy on tab F, and it's on the screen, Mrs. Snodgrass, do you want to make a nomination?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, I would move that we nominate Mr. Ray Din, resides at fifteen sixteen Jefferson Davis Highway here in Camden.
Thank you, can we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner, discussion, Mrs. Snodgrass.
Uh, just, I spoke with Mr. Din on the, on the phone a few times, and, uh, just excited to hear, um, his excitement about the airport, he's been involved in aviation, uh, all of his life, was on an airport board, uh, in California where he moved here from, and he's, he's here with us, uh, this evening.
Mr. Din, welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ray.
Good to see you, Ray. Uh, other discussion, I've met with, uh, Mr. Schwartz, the chairman, it's always useful, uh, to get the chairman to, to meet with the individual as well, and he's talked to him by phone, and Billy Schwartz is very comfortable, this, I'm ready to move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Din, we look forward to seeing you out there. Uh, we move now to the third item, which is a bid for portable outfield temporary fencing, and it's on the screen in tab F, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have before you tonight, uh, requests from staff to approve the low bid received for portable outdoor, uh, temporary fencing at the, uh, for the recreation department, uh, this is an item that is being funded from the Recreation Bond, and is one of the priorities that we've addressed trying to meet this year.
Very good, can we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Connel, any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, uh, let's move to a vote, all those in favor so signify, and, Mary, it's unanimous, thank you very much for that hard work there. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is a bid for, this is important, a bid for a comprehensive airport drainage improvement project, it's item four, and it's on the screen, and it's a tab, uh, golf, gee, uh, Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, back in April of twenty eighteen, uh, the county received bids for this project, which we've been working towards for several years, uh, the bids, uh, upon being received, uh, the low bid at that time was Lindler Construction. Uh, the bids, uh, upon being received, uh, the low bid at that time was Lindler Construction for $1.69 million. Uh, second lowest bidder was Enson Contractors. The FAA approved those bids based on the low bidder. However, the county never received the necessary paperwork from the FAA until many months later. Did not receive it till December, at which point it went in front of council to award the bid. Uh, council awarded the bid on December 11, 2018. However, uh, Lindler, at that point, um, felt that they could no longer meet the terms that they had, and they, uh, put in for a, an increase of what it would cost to construct the project. Uh, staff went to the second lowest bidder. Uh, the second lowest bidder would honor their bid. Uh, so, we come to you tonight and are requesting that council award this project to the second lowest bidder, Enson Construction, uh, for a total of $1.73 million.
All right, very good. I think we'll have some discussion on this. Can we first get it on the table? Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Uh, we have a second from Mr. Bozard.
Second.
Mr. Snodgrass, uh, Mr. Bozard, you want to lead into discussion?
Yes, thank you. Spent seven years on county count, I mean, on, uh, Airport Commission, and we were trying to get that done then, and I'm so happy to see this being done at this time. And, uh, Mr. Carpenter, would you tell us what part we're going to pay in this?
The county's match for this is 10%, so the total match for the county would be $173,000, roughly.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Other comments? Um, I would say, can they meet the timeline, start and end? Can you give us that, please?
Uh, they've given us a timeline of construction, um, they have, um, approximate, let me see, I've got to look through that to find you that, sir. Um, timeline for construction would be through August of this year, so yes, sir, they can meet the timeline.
Yeah, that's, became very important when I was talking to, uh, the Airport Commission. Uh, Mr. Ben, you'll want to dive into this too, uh, because it impacts our services provided at the airport. Uh, so, uh, when do you think the first truck could show up? Do you know? Basically, April?
Enson is ready to go on this, of course, as we found with everything else we're doing, the rain is affecting it. This is going to be a drainage project. Um, the ground has to be able to at least hold their equipment to get out there. Um, but they would tentatively mobilize on April 8th is the date that they would anticipate-
Good, that's amazing.
-mobilization.
Yeah, great. Al, go ahead.
Yes, one other question. Are our engineers are going to look at this, or is the South Carolina Air and Articulation Commission looking at this, or who is?
Overseeing the project?
Yes.
Um, our engineer, W.K. Dixon, uh, would still oversee this project as they were on board when we started it, as well as, um, our county engineer. Uh, the South Carolina Aviation Authority is, uh, helping to meet part of the match that is required. Uh, as a rule, they don't send engineers to oversee the project, though. They just send paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there was really a lot of distress among the pilots out there about this delay, and I think, uh, your engineers and your project manager, your contractor, Vic, and, uh, and the Airport Commission for staying on top of this, this has been hard to get back on track. And, uh, dealing with the bureaucrats about three levels above us at the federal government is, is amazing. Um, any further discussion? Thank you very much. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and I thank you very much for that. We move to the next item. Now, we've delayed it, I think, item number five, hopefully next time, to remind you that's a bid for the sewer line at Heritage Point, and hopefully we'll see it in about two weeks. Uh, move now to Council briefs, Mr. Snodgrass.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, just a few things. Uh, I want to thank, uh, county staff, uh, our zoning director and county attorneys for working with me on the, uh, on the amendment for the zoning, or for the ship container ordinance, and thank you, council, uh, for, uh, for your understanding. It was a way, a beautiful way of seeing how, how the process works. Uh, want to emphasize the litter issue that we have in Kershaw County, excited to see, uh, the commission that we have so active. Uh, those of you who don't know, kind of a strange fact, Palmetto Pride, which is this the state kind of nonprofit organization that, um, mobilizes folks for, for litter pickup, it was actually started because Lou Holtz came here to be a football coach, and during his interview, he flew into the airport and he made a comment that, why is this state so trashy? And, uh, and from there is, is how Palmetto Pride came to be. So, I want to encourage people to use that. You can go on their website, if you see, if you see someone do litter, uh, you can actually step a picture of the car that it came from, and you can upload it there. So, so thank y'all for all the work that you're doing. Um, also, uh, Mr. Elias Altateri, good to see you there, young man, and, uh, he's here working, uh, for his Eagle Scout. He lives in my district, and they contacted me, and, and so thankful to have you here. And, uh, this is, this right here, the, this, the local level of government, uh, this is, this is, this is where, this is where it happens, and I'm convinced this is the best level of government here. Um, and then also, one last thing, just want to, uh, kind of give a shout out, I want to try to do this as it comes up, but, uh, Second Chance Fellowship at the church over the last few years, that has taken a, an older building, they've moved into an old Jehovah's Witness Building, I believe, uh, by the IGA, and I'm kind of going to give them my District Five Pride Award, so to speak, and, uh, over the last few years, they have redone that building, uh, they have made improvements to, uh, through the landscape around that building, uh, they have purchased the adjoining properties and put in new fencing, and really done all sorts of things to take a property that was vacant and to use that, and they're using it for ministry, the Boy Scout troop that's going to be meeting it in the house beside it. So, I'm looking forward to the next meetings as I'm keeping my eyes open for my District Five Palmetto, or District Five Pride Awards, uh, just to try to encourage, uh, those folks in, in the district, especially along the Highway 1 corridor, to, man, take pride in your business and your home, and I want to do what I can to recognize those who are making that personal investment, uh, back into our community. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Uh, briefly, just want to mention Camden Military Academy. They were recently named the Military Academy of the Year by the Southeastern Chamber of Commerce, and it's a great award, great recognition, they do a great job, uh, with the young men out there, so just want to mention that. That concludes my-
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bozard?
Thank you. Uh, I've been traveling quite a bit lately, going to meetings and doctor's appointments, different things, and I came through Elgin, and I see y'all getting a new Bojangles. Y'all are really growing. But what I'd like to talk about is one of your citizens out there, Paul Towns. Some of you might know Paul because he is, um, has a big show out there at his place on Crazy Horse Circle every year, with all the lights, with all the trains, and, uh, it's hard to find parking out there, but I've had occasion to meet with him several times this past week, and I'll meet with him again Saturday, I think. But anyway, if y'all have never been out there, go out there at Christmas time because you're in for one, one big, big show. And I've not seen it myself, and I'm sorry to say that because I didn't even know about it until this week. But, uh, and people I've talked to and people that have been out there said they're very impressed with it, and, uh, he is doing one big job out there for Kershaw County, and he also is involved with the fair out at Sand Hill, which this year, he's telling me that they're not going to be able to have the fair because Clemson, Clemson won't let them use the land this year. Mary, you need to see about that. And, uh, so, but he gave that money, I think he gave me a figure of $10,000 that went to our schools last year, and about $90,000 went to Richland County, and they're in the process of trying to get it to come over here into Camden to, uh, historic Camden area over here, area big enough to have it. So, if anybody calls you, if anybody comes by and asks you for your help, I appreciate y'all considering it because giving that kind of money to the schools, maybe that money could come to, all of it could come to Kershaw County schools. So, maybe we need to look into that, see if we can't find them a place for, have that fair that they've been having up at Sand Hills every year. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Conell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Al, speaking of Elgin, uh, Bojangles is coming, that's big excitement, and I think the deli's actually, actually expanding at, uh, IGA in that space that's been vacated. Um, this past weekend, March 9th, the town of Elgin within its limits had a very successful car show. They continue to have great things over there at Potter Park. Thank you, Mayor, for making that available. Uh, some of the vehicles out there and the people who keep their vehicles up locally, these antique cars are just unbelievable. I mean, really impressive. And then I also wanted to echo other council members and those who've spoken tonight on the road cleanup effort, March 23rd. We've got a real problem with litter in the county. Um, I view it as a tragedy of the commons where people feel like, oh, that's just public property, someone else will take care of it. We need to police it better, we need to charge folks, we need to hold them accountable for littering and enforce the laws that are on the books. I remember in the, um, mid to late 90s, going through middle school and high school, much of it was organized through local churches, and you'd get people out there on the roads, uh, helping to clean up a particular stretch, there was a sense of pride that came with taking care of your community, and, um, I just think we can do better on that front. So, I'm going to be out there with my wife and, uh, little baby in tow, March 23rd. I hope everybody else will identify one of those times and locations that worked for you, and let's grab a bag and let's get it done, and then let's hold people accountable as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, just very briefly, um, Mr. Cato got up and spoke to us tonight about, I think for the second time, about the, uh, situation in his area up there in the northern part of the county. I would like to just make sure either the deputy administrator or the administrator please contact him, and I would like to know what's going on with that fencing on those easements, and I know now's not the time, but I'm just making that request, if I could, please. Also, um, I'd like to welcome and recognize Pastor Steve Lee and his beautiful wife, wonderful people, they're also on the board for the Alpha Center, and they give so much of their time with their school and their church and everything else, and it's good to see you here, just wanted to let you know that, and, uh, thank you so much. And I, I'm going to say something, I'm probably jumping the gun, but I see Peggy Spivey's here, and I just learned the other day that you're retiring, and I'm going to tell you something.
What?
You're not retiring? No, I don't want you to. Oh, okay, so you've changed, I got you.
I think you jumped the gun.
I got you. Well, don't want you to retire. You're, you're the last hire I've ever had that's still working for the county, and you do a great job as a certified jail administrator, you know, one of very few handful in Kershaw County, and, uh, something I did not obtain, uh, before I left. But bottom line is, so I know what kind of accomplishment that is, so I just wanted to tip my hat to you. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, having said that and jumped the gun with her, I'm, I'm done.
Hope you didn't start something there, Jimmy. Okay, I'll move to my briefs very quickly. Um, if, uh, the clerk would make sure we give the verbatim minutes to the, uh, media who are, who are here. Uh, also, there's a letter from Mr. DeBose on, uh, advice on FOIA, FOIA, I can't pronounce FOIA, uh, kindly provide that to anybody who wants it. It's also copies with each council member. Uh, Mr. Jones suggested, and I hardly supported him, in a letter that you also have on vaping on public grounds, so you can see that, and for the record, and to overcome some legislation that's pending at the State House, oh, boy, and then there's some more legislation at the State House of significant impact to us, uh, could impact us in millage because the way they are raising tort limits. I have no idea what I'm talking about, but that's why we have a lawyer, but they will allow people to bring a tort, or something like that, it sounds like something to eat, to, against the county, and it would require us to ensure to a higher degree, and would also hold counties like ours, or the state of, uh, or the city of Camden, for a significant amount of, uh, uh, bills in the case of a tort. There's also a letter out there on the joint use campus, as I mentioned previously, that we're almost there, but we're not there yet, and we as a team, ATAC, CCTC, uh, the chamber, county, and so on, all should get together and finish well, and Peggy McLean is leading that effort, look forward to seeing that, and we've been promised some, uh, other people's money to help us improve the, the final landscaping out there. I think it's going to be terrific. I also ask you your, your attention to boards and commissions, we're starting to leak a little bit, and it's time for all of us to take a look. I'll work with Mary to try to boil that down for each council member, I may be looking to you to help us find more people like Mr. Din, who joined our airport commission. There's one in front of you now in particular interest, uh, to fill this position of, uh, Mr. Lauren Birch on the Kershaw Health District. Uh, a name has been put forward, and we'll look for a nomination from the floor, and next time we meet, please look for that, okay? Um, we will go into executive session after this, it'll be on a personnel and contracting matter, there will be no vote, uh, it'll be, it should be relatively quick, but it's an update on both a contractual and a personal matter. And let me just highlight once again what we achieved last week. It was a bit messy, but the last meeting was a vital one. We agreed on going forward on the mega site. Many of you, I think all of you, have been talking about that, and, uh, economic development took a major step forward, and Mr. Carpenter will cover that final step in that option that we agreed to this week. All of you were notified on that option, and I believe, earnestly believe, all your issues were resolved. I would ask and hope that everyone listening tonight and all the media will not miss what the administrator has to say. This is the headline, that Kershaw County invests dramatically in economic development, and we were supported in person by the governor of our state, Mr. McMaster, and the Senator, Mr. Shaheen. Now, that was a very important step. We've had over 27 visits to the mega site, and we've never won anything. It requires changed behavior, aggressive behavior, as we were advised by all the experts in January, and last week, we had the governor himself join us at the New Spec Building and on Highway 601, overlooking the mega site. He personally endorsed everything we are doing in economic development, a referendum on schools and the joint use campus, help us to have a trained and ready workforce and better jobs for our children, and he endorsed our investment in the mega site in the spec building. He made a statement to me and to many others that he's never seen anything quite like what we're doing in Kershaw County, and he is going to invest in us, and we're getting money from him and his Department of Commerce. These are dramatic improvements, and we are proving that we're open for business and that we invest in ourselves to attract and to keep new business. I thank the councilmen here tonight that voted in favor of the investment, the critical funds that were needed, and by which will improve our competitiveness of our mega site and the spec building on a global scale. Y'all have, y'all got pictures of that. We will hear more about the option shortly from Mr. Carpenter. And finally, I want to address procedure. Yeah, we got Robert's Rules of Order, but you can have all the rules in the world if the spirit ain't right, and so the process shouldn't get away in, of a good product. Uh, there were some people that wanted me to address how that decision was made, and it was a momentous decision, but it was a little messy, and I, as the chairman, feel it keenly that I'm not able to always, uh, satisfy each of you. Mr. DeBose has a written statement and a summary on the issue raised in some circles as to how we presented ourselves in the agenda and at the council itself, and he'll put the rest, the issue that we did indeed conduct a meeting correctly and with openness, it's all in your packet, and Mr. DeBose will address that briefly, if you could, please, sir. One, uh, person in the room, uh, one of the newspapers framed it, "Leadership is reaching goals through the action of others. That means you got to work with people. Obstruction is creating difficulty. Ineffectiveness is not producing the desired result." We got to the right result, it was a little bit messy, and I regret that, but it is a role, my role, unfortunately, unfortunately, to conduct the meetings of council in such a fashion so that every voice is heard, and so that, but also that the business of council be advanced. In short, to be effective, it takes a great care that every voice is heard, and that is rule number one, making sure that the voices are heard and we achieve an outcome. rule number one, making sure that the voices are heard and we achieve an outcome. In short, to be effective, every voice must be heard, but no single voice can override the rule of the majority to move things forward. And you can see there's a healthy tension there, and that tension sometimes is not so healthy. And I want to hope to dispense with that, to ensuring you all that all voices will be held, heard, and the county will continue to move forward. Freedom of speech and compliance with transparency under the state law and under the FOIA must be assured. Once all have had their say, and then we move forward engaging and revisiting items long ago decided is often very unhelpful. We got to keep moving forward. There's a little bit of how our rules work. It's all in that boring book called Robert's Rules of Order. There are no pictures. It's the most boring thing you ever saw, but occasionally it helps. We publish the agenda the week before. Where possible, backup material, ordinances and references are included, such as we did on the, on the recent ordinance that Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Jones and Mr. Conell brought forward so expertly on behalf of Mr. Bozard. Such detail is not always available beforehand. Yes, it's desirable, but it's not mandatory. And I work, and you work, and the staff works to get it in the read ahead package if we can, because that means we operate more efficiently. Yet, in the end, those materials are made available, as they were tonight and as they were two weeks ago, to the public and to the council to assure transparency and compliance with state law. And we do that very carefully. We got a watchdog over there named DeBoz that won't let me mess up too much or too badly. Number two, every councilman has the absolute right to add items to the agenda before it is published, all the time. And that entails dialogue, and again, it gets a little messy, messy and give and take. But in the end, the staff and the councilmen always work towards a refined product, and we get better, as we did on this, on this shipping container item. It takes, it's hard. It was also the case in the mega site. Three, once the agenda is published, it can only be changed in open session, in exigent circumstances, and a simple majority vote. And that's what happened last week, two weeks ago. Some have said this was a little bit messy, and it was, but it is not unfair. It is fundamental to us as a democracy that while the majority rules, the minority must also be heard, but it also must yield so as not to obstruct when the final votes come along. Fundamentally democratic and fair, but this protocol protects another precious resource, and that's the time we have with our families. These are working men and women in this county up here on this board, and they want to get home occasionally, and this is extra duty for most of us. Time of the staff is precious, time of the citizens is precious, time of this council is precious. And I recognize we're coming up on eight o'clock at night, but this needs to be said. And all of us have some kids and grandkids, and we take up unnecessary time and staff time when we, when we do not conduct ourselves in an orderly fashion. What are you smiling about, Mike? Now, I now see us moving into the budget process. There will be a lot of debate. Not a single one of us up here will be fully satisfied, and not all the time. And there will be give and take, but the good news is, we'll work together, as we did tonight. We have Vision 2030 to guide us, and we've gone through the hammer and tongs of voting for goals and objectives, some of which will be funded right away, and some of them which may not be funded this year. But in the end, we'll have a budget on one July, and it'll put us on a steady pathway to achieving Vision 2030, the one the citizens of this county support by an overwhelming majority. So time is tight, money's tight, and everybody shows up ready to work, we can get this job done. And pretty soon, Mr. Carpenter's going to load us up with a schedule, and all I ask is that we roll up our sleeves and get to work. And remember, we got to be effective. With that, Mr. Carpenter, would you take off on your brief?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have a couple items for you to finish up tonight. I would like to, Den, play upon what the chairman has already brought up, which is the option. As you recall, the last meeting, there was discussion about extending the option on the land, the mega site land, and we will be, we've signed an agreement with the family on the option to extend it for five years. The option will also include with it a repayment clause if the family were to sell it at any point in time during those five years for a non-industrial use. So we have extended now for another five years the option. It never did expire. We never did not have an option in the county, and it has been renewed for the next five years. You see up on the screen in front of you as well, the tentative work session schedule that I'm setting. I would ask council members to look at that and let me know. I've tried to set them all on Thursday nights. In most cases, I'm trying to, I've got a little break in the middle, but we end up coming first reading in May with the hope of having third and final reading in June. So if you would please let me know if those dates do not work, and I'll try to schedule to the best of my ability. I'd like to have all seven members of council, obviously, at these meetings. It certainly makes for a better billed budget when we have input at every meeting going forward. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Would also like to review for council on Thursday, on Tuesday, March 19th, the first meeting of the White Pond Road Traffic Meeting Stakeholders will be held three o'clock. It's going to be the Elgin Urgent Care, which is off Widing Way. This is pulling together stakeholders in the White Pond Road Elgin area to discuss further improvements, DOT, CTC, County Transportation, Town of Elgin, Homeowners Association, the hospital, interested landowners, trying to pull them all together to further come up with a plan that will hopefully, with the one side of the intersection being upgraded with Love's Truck Stop, start a plan for the other side of the intersection as well to get it upgraded also. Earlier tonight, we had the opportunity to rec.
Just mention, I know Mary Emmons is here tonight. Would you make sure you send a formal invite to their town council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, I will say that we're limited somewhat in space for the room, so we've only got 20, only kind of room we could find there was, concede about 20, but we'll certainly invite them, and I guess we'll stand if we have more than 20.
Let me just say that Mr. Conell and I met with Department of Transportation, and the idea is, we do this information gathering, and then we'd have another meeting that you would arrange with Department of Transportation to put our request on board for a real backbone of what we need up there. They have created a problem, and we need to help them solve it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Earlier, we saw Mr. Cato receiving yet another award. His office is rather cluttered with them because he's that good of an employee that he's constantly recognized. He's saved this county significant funds over the years with his risk management and the way he manages it for the county. But he's just one great employee. I'd like to tell you about another one, members of council. We have coming up Jim Edge, who is a supervisor in our EMS department, will be receiving the Patriot Award from the Department of Defense. And this is an award that's given to local employers for their efforts made in working and supporting active duty or reserve members of our military with them. This is Jim and Gerald will be attending that meeting. Gerald has previously also won the award when he was with the hospital. So we continue excellence here. We continue with excellent employees, and that's something that, we shall have pictures of that going forward for you as well. Also, I would just, Mr. Snodgrass, maybe instead of calling it District Five Pride Award, maybe we can call it David's Starlings. That might be, have a little catch to it. And I think when, when Mr. Holtz came, he said, "South Carolina must have the cleanest cars in the country because there can't be any litter left in the cars because they threw them out all on the side of the road." With that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Very good, sir. Mr. DeBoz, very briefly, sir.
Yeah, I will be brief. Mr. Chairman, you previously alluded to a opinion that I wrote together with Tommy Morgan, and the opinion is in regard to your request, the legal opinion at the procedural mega site vote on February 26, 2019, under the FOIA, South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. And I have written, it's a written opinion, it's a public document. Mary, if you don't have a copy, yes, Mary has copies over there. She's handed them out. I'm referring to it at the meeting, so it will be a public document in the record of the meeting. It's here now, and it's three pages long. The chairman asked me to be succinct, so three pages is the best I could do. But it goes into great detail, but I'll just read the executive summary, which is three sentences. "Yes, council complied with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act and case law when it moved to go in executive session to discuss the mega site on the agenda during the meeting of February 26, 2019." It goes into great detail as to why we are in compliance and were in compliance. "Yes, gentlemen, Kershaw County Council on February 26, 2019, procedurally, substantively, factually complied with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act." I won't go into the three pages, Mr. Chairman. Having said that, I'm going to ask for an executive session, which the chairman alluded to, for a legal briefing on two contractual matters. One contractual matter is threatened litigation as to an employment matter. In that regard, we have with us Vance Bettis, who is attorney, who represents Kershaw County in employment matters, and I would ask Mr. Bettis to attend that executive session. The other matter, which does not involve Mr. Bettis, which I would like to hear after the first one, is a contract matter involving a dispute with a public official that involves potential liability economically for Kershaw County. So if the council makes a motion to go in executive session, Mr. Chairman, the motion would be predicated on the two matters I just set forth in the record. So the motion would be based on those two contractual matters, which I just delineated. Potential lawsuit by an employment, employment, and a contractual lawsuit involving an elected official that involves potential liability for Kershaw County.
And no vote afterwards, is that correct?
There'll be no vote afterwards.
And who should attend? It'd be Vance, yourself, and the members of council.
And Mr. Carpenter.
Okay.
No, not Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter does not need to attend.
Okay. Can we have a motion to go into executive session for two contractual matters, along with Mr. DeBoz and Vance, with no vote and returning thereafter?
As delineated by me.
Yep.
Show me.
Second. So we have a first from Mr. Bozard, a second from Mr. Conell. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify, and it's unanimous, and we are adjourned for an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a quick picture with this Eagle, potential Eagle Scout before we go into back? He has sat out there like a trooper.
He's been there the whole time.
Four men present. We have a quorum. Can I have a motion to return from executive?
Show made.
Mr. Bozard, a first, second from Mr. Conell. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say signify, and it's unanimous, Mary, with all members here now present, except for Mr. Tucker. We have a motion now to dismiss. Mr. Gardner, a second from Mr. Conell. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. Mr. Jones, it's unanimous. Y'all have a great evening and be safe.